Good morning, everyone. We're so happy that you're here this morning. Good to see lots of smiling faces today. And so, welcome to our March meeting. And we always open up with a moment of silence, taking the chance to focus our minds and to ask for wisdom and direction. So would you join me this morning in a moment of silence? Thank you. And I think some of you have noticed that we have a new board member today. We want to welcome the governor, and I think that she has some thoughts that she would like to share with the board and with all of us. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Wanted to just take a few minutes to be here this morning and personally thank the board. Whether they know it or not, they have a lot of work ahead of them. And I am really excited about the passage of Arkansas Learns that we signed into law yesterday that I think is by far the most comprehensive and far-reaching education reform that we've seen, certainly anywhere in Arkansas in our history here, but also anywhere in the country. And I'm really proud of what I think this means for Arkansas students, for Arkansas parents, and for Arkansas teachers. We're going to go from being ranked at the very bottom, 48th in the country, to in the top five in teacher pay. We're going to focus on things like literacy, parental empowerment, making sure our teachers have the training and resources they need to be successful in the classroom, and rewarding that success along the way. We also want to focus on things like career readiness and making sure that when our students graduate, they're prepared to go into the workforce. I am really proud of this legislation. It is the culmination of not just the last few weeks, but the last several years, not only from my time campaigning around the state and talking to teachers, parents, superintendents, and students, but also great partnership with our legislature, their willingness to go out into their communities, get feedback, bring that to the table. I feel like we have something that is really special that is going to change the future for students in Arkansas, and I think it's something that we can all be proud of. It's not a perfect piece of legislation, because no legislation is ever perfect, which is why the state board has their work cut out for them. They're going to be in charge of helping on the rules and the implementation, but I have no doubt that this group of people is going to make sure that everything we do is helpful to Arkansas students and parents and teachers. And so, I'm very thankful for your willingness to serve for the hard work that I know that you're going to put into making sure that this is successful, because ultimately, I think all of us want the same thing, and that is for the success of our students. We want to see them thrive. We want to see them grow, and I think this helps provide a lot more pathways and opportunities to do that. And to Secretary Aliva, I joked with him yesterday when I handed him the pen after signing that the last couple of weeks has been very hard work, but it's just the very beginning. And the hard work really starts now. Getting the bill passed certainly came with challenges, but the difficulty is actually the implementation, and that's going to be the work of those sitting around me. So I wanted to take a minute to be here this morning. Thank you for the hard work that you've already done, the commitment that you have to the people of this state, and the great things that I know that you're going to do over the coming years. And Secretary Aliva, if the last few weeks on the job is any indication, I know that we are in great hands and that you're going to do a tremendous job implementing and leading our state to make sure our students are on the best pathway forward. So thank you for letting me take a few minutes to be here with you guys this morning and look forward to taking Arkansas to the very top. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll give them an opportunity. Any board members who'd like to make a comment this morning? We may be a little intimidated by the job that's ahead, but I know the board is willing to work hard and do what's necessary.
Great. Thank you all so much.
All right. Okay. All right, we're going to pause and take a quick picture. That would have been another big show this morning, wouldn't it? All right. Let's see. We have another recognition this morning that we are thrilled with. Mr. Catton? Yes. Well, you will.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do I need to push a button or anything here?
Is it green?
It's green.
Then you're good.
So I think I'm good live. All right, thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to have a few moments of your time to bring a recognition to one of our students, Ms. Dia Chakravarti. Dia is one of our seniors at the school, getting ready to graduate, and she has won first place in our 13th Annual Regional Braille Challenge in the Varsity Division, which is actually a national competition sponsored by the Braille Institute of America. And this is the 13th year that the school has hosted the regional competition part of that event in Arkansas. And so, that will potentially qualify her for the national competition in LA. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed that she'll be one of those top five from across the nation that will go to that. If so, it'll be her second time to go to nationals.
Wow.
She did so back in the first grade. So Dia has been with us from the very beginning of her educational journey at the school, and it has been a privilege to work with her and her family. She's a very accomplished vocalist, a very accomplished musician. She plays with the Arkansas Youth Symphony Orchestra. She was at Governor's School this past summer. So a very accomplished young lady that we're very proud of. And Braille is very important to her as a student and for her future success. And this competition just gives us an opportunity to bring attention to Braille, and its importance as a literacy medium for all of our students. Lori Cole is our Braille Specialist. I call her our Braille guru at the school, and she's also our Adaptive Technology Specialist, as well as one of our teacher supervisors. And would you like to say anything about Braille?
Braille is very important for the students that are visually impaired. It's not used as much as it needs to be. We're trying to highlight and encourage Braille literacy across the state, as well as in America. But the more the kids are reading and just encouraging, we're excited about Arkansas Learns and what it means for literacy in general and what it will do for our Braille students.
Yes, yes.
Dia, did you have any?
Yeah. Dia? Welcome, Dia. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
And tell them where you'll be going when you graduate.
So, check, check. Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
So whenever I graduate, I am actually going to attend the University of Arkansas at Little Rock. I'll be, I think I might be double majoring, but I think I'll be doing music and technology, because nowadays, music and technology actually go hand in hand. Because talking about the subject of Braille and different types of accommodations, in terms of creating Braille music, I have this suite installed on my laptop called Dancing Dots, and one of the programs is the Lime Allowed software, which makes it to where you type music on the keyboard, but the notes will appear on the Braille display, as well as on the screen in print. So not only will sighted people get to see the staff and what notes you have on there, but the blind will also get to actually read it and get a feel for, okay, this is a C, this is a C sharp in the fifth octave, et cetera.
Wow. Well, we're so proud, and we can't wait to hear what you accomplish at UAL, Laura. I know that you're going to do great things, and you started your education career with a national award. I think you're going again. So we're so proud of you, and we appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing with us and being patient as we started our agenda this morning. We always like to start with recognitions, because that gets us off on the right focus and right direction. We do have some changes to the agenda. We're going to move the consent agenda item, the second one, the Marvel-A-Lane issue, to before the consent agenda. It is not actually an action item. It shouldn't have been put there. It is actually an item that is more informational, that the department is going to give us some information this morning, and we will not be taking any action today on the Marvel-A-Lane issue. We will be getting information from the department, and then we will act on that probably maybe next month. And if it is okay with the board, I would like to suggest that we have our April meeting at Marvel-A-Lane. That way, we can hear from the community, and it will not be a hardship for the community to have input. And if there are any surrounding communities, they will be able to have a part with that. So is that all right with the board there? Okay, so if Ms. Smith, if you will work with the district and work out the logistics of it? Okay, all right. So we will plan that for next month. All right. So we're going to move right into that issue. I think Ms. Wagner, are you the one that's going to present that this morning? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shastity Wagner, ADE Legal. So I'm just going to give you guys an update on where we are in the process with Marvel A-Lane. So this is, it's an Act 60 consolidation. So Act 60 applies to any school districts that's average daily membership falls below 350 students for two consecutive years. The Marvel-A-Lane School District was classified as Level 5, intensive support by this board on November 28th of 2022. And then, on December 8th of 2022, this board denied Marvel's petition for a minimum school district size waiver. So at that point in time, the Marvel School District had the ability to partner with somebody for a voluntary consolidation or annexation. They were to submit that petition by March 1st under the law. Well, unfortunately, they were not able to find anybody to voluntarily consolidate with. So since we didn't get a petition by March 1st, this board, under the law, has to administratively consolidate the Marvel-A-Lane School District by May 1st, and so that consolidation can take effect as of July 1st. So right now, the point of the meeting today is just to update you on the process. It's not the hearing. The hearing will take place next month, which will take place in Marvel, as you guys all just discussed. So at that hearing, excuse me, at that hearing, the division, DESI, will actually come to you with a recommendation on what the division feels is the best thing to do for all of the students and for the district. At that hearing, though, you will get an opportunity to not only hear from the division, but you will also hear from Marvel-A-Lane and the surrounding districts, and then, of course, the public and anyone who wishes to testify at that. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith, because she's going to update you on what we're doing right now at Marvel-A-Lane.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner, and welcome to the people from Marvel.
Yes.
Glad to have you here today. We like it when our community shows up. So this is a great thing, and I think it's great that the opportunity to go to Marvel and host the board meeting in their community on April is a good thing. There has been a lot going on. At this moment, we have really left the voluntary consolidation in the hands of the district up until this deadline, okay? So at this point, we now, our goal with Secretary Aliva is really to kind of push our chairs in, pull in those superintendents together, pull in the community, and hopefully be able to come in April with a recommendation on what's next. And I think today, getting to hear some of the public comments and some of the thoughts today will help us get it started in that next phase of this. As far as what's going on in the district right now, a lot of support, and it hadn't been easy, okay? Not, it hadn't been easy for them, it hadn't been easy for us, okay? So it's a lot of working together. I will tell you, our educational co-ops around the state have stepped up big time. Each have kind of taken on a week and have voluntarily sent cooperative specialists for math literacy and science, and they're in the high school directly teaching students every week. What makes it hard is it's a new group coming in every week.
Yeah.
Okay? And so, getting our communication clear, getting our expectations clear, a lot of change for kids every week, it's hard. It is hard. I think Dr. Ray and I have both cried together at different times. She's over there. She's over here. Love and hate, always love that we in there, right? But we're moving forward, because we both know that the number one priority in all this is not the adults, it's the kids in those classrooms and setting them up for the best success. And so, that's what our focus stays on every single time. So that's all I'm going to say, unless you have a specific question.
Anyone over here have a question? Okay, I think Ms. Woods is on line. I don't see her, but.
I'm here, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, I see you now, okay. All right. I do know that you had early submitted public comment from Ms. Scaife.
Okay.
That was sent in ahead of time and for them to make public comment. And then, I know there are several that have signed up for public comment today.
Okay.
If you want to move forward with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. We wouldn't have to have a motion for Ms. Scaife, but we do need a motion to hear the other public comment. Is that the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion and accept it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McFetris to accept public comment. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Hunter, I saw you first, so we'll go with you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We'll start with Ms. Scaife, since we heard that. I have that one signed up first. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. And thank you. My name is Elaine Scaife, a graduate of Marvel High School and a Board of Director of the Marvel Community Empowerment Incorporated. And I will be presenting the Marvel Communities Plan for the Marvel-A-Lane School District per the board's direction to annex or to consolidate. Effective July 1, 2021, the State Board of Education voted to annex the Dollar Way School District into the Pine Bluff School District, who were at Level 5 and categorized as being in academic and physical distress. Dollar Way was able to remain at their current location, keep their mascot, and keep their name. The Marvel Community is requesting that the board will approve a similar annexation plan for the Marvel-A-Lane School District by annexing into one of the following districts: Barton, Helena West Helena, Clarendon, where the elementary and high schools will remain open at the Marvel location, and the district will keep its name and its mascot. However, in light of the Learns Act passed yesterday by Governor Huckabee Sanders, our preferred recommendation would be to approve the district to partner with a charter school district or with another entity to create a public school district transformation campus. It is not the fault of the students that they have the lowest test scores in the state and that certified licensed teachers cannot be recruited and retained. These students are bright, and they can learn, and we must do what's in the best interest of these students by bringing to them the best education in their own communities and put any burdens of traveling on the administration and not the students. The second part of our plan addresses teacher shortages, improved educational experiences, and increases student participation. And Dr. Hamilton will handle that piece.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I'm Dr. Ovel Hamilton, Morehouse College. What am I doing here from Atlanta, Georgia? Well, I'm a Barton, 1985 Barton graduate. And you see, we're rivals on the football field, but we're in unison together in the community. What I bring to you today is what we call the Metaverse. This is what we use to transform our colleges around the world, and we have about 70 universities that have come on, Morehouse College being the first Metaverse. When I heard about the closing of Marvel High School, I offered the idea that this could be the first public high school in the world to go to the Metaverse. And in that, the students will learn, not just in their area, but they'll be able to go to the Great Wall of China in the Metaverse. They'll be able to see Napoleon's Battle in the Metaverse. They'll be able to go to the World War II battleship that I created, being a former Navy guy, into the Metaverse as well. And so, this would increase learning, increase test scores, and also increase the student participation. Also, addressing the teacher shortage, in the Metaverse, we partnered with Victor XR. We have a pool of like 300 teachers available and ready on a virtual platform, and they will be able to teach the students like Japanese, Chinese, history, biology, science, chemistry, all manner of courses. And we've also added vocational courses like welding, carpentry, phlebotomy, and things like that for the students as well. But like I said, this would transform the education in rural Arkansas, transform the teacher, make sure we have addressed the teacher shortage, and also with the money we are saving, because you can get about 10 Metaverse instructors for just one instructor that you're paying now. So we are looking at this as, like I say, going forward into the future. This is phenomenal, and I like to say, since I'm, they say, this is my hometown, and so I want to be, this to be the first school to go into the Metaverse, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. And I have the list here for public comment, and I did forget to say this in the beginning, that public comment is limited to three minutes, so if you can remember that when you come up. Mr. Gage, Mr. Johnny Gage. Welcome, Mr. Gage.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm also an alumni of Marvel-A-Lane School District, and I'm part of the community that was just up speaking, and we did come together to hope that you all would take a look at our plan that they has proposed to you. We have thought about, a lot of our students, as far as like consolidating, going to another area that is a rural area. Transportation is hard. It would be such a hard deal for parents. If something were to happen, that they need to get to their children, a lot of people don't have transportation in that area. And so, we would sincerely like to keep them in that area, if at all possible. And we're going to start, as a community organization, we're going to start engaging more with our parents down there to get them more involved in going to teacher-parents meeting, because we're all in this together.
Yes.
Not only the teachers, it's the parents, it's the community. And so, as being the president of this community organization, I'm going to work diligently to try to get parents more involved with their schools, with the learning, and this program that they have presented is a very good start. And we just hope that you all will take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Powell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here briefly as a parent, also a child support enforcement specialist for the state. I've been fighting and praying on the education end. Marvel, we want our kids to be able to get that good quality education, and we're just, I'm praying that if we can just keep them there because of the distance, everybody's speaking on distance, it is. It's the geographical area and as far as they would have to go. I'm speaking on behalf of the Elaine children. They were merged in with Marvel, and we want to keep them with our Marvel students. I have had two college graduates from my household. I was a single parent up until 10 years ago. I've had two college graduates, one about to come out, that'll be three. My daughter's here with me. She'll graduate from Marvel in next year in May, and she is an honor roll student. And I'm praying that we can get all of the help that we need at Marvel to be able to keep our kids there. They're depressed about all of this. I'm having that sense of depression about all of this because of my daughter. I know how she's feeling, and I can imagine how the other kids are feeling too, and their parents. But we're just asking for a chance. We need that chance. We have good educators there. We do need help with them, for them to be able to better themselves. It's a crisis all over the US. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning. Rosie, is it Tate? Okay. Come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
It won't take three minutes for me to say what I have to say. I have traveled that distance from Marvel to Elaine. I did it for five years. I taught my first five years of college down there. I'm a 50-year teacher, and I know how hard it is. I knew it when Elaine first, when they said they had to come to Marvel to go to school. That's what I want to keep from doing, if you all could possibly. Don't have those kids going any further. Please. It's just been hard on them. Those kids have to ride so far from Elaine down there until they're asleep when they get there. until they're asleep when they get, they're asleep when they get, when the bus stop. And they have to wake them up to get off, to come, to go to class. It's very hard. Please, whatever you all do, I'll keep them there. The Elaine people down there love me just like Marvel, all over Phillips County. Because I left Elaine after five years, and I went to Helena West Helena. I did 34 years there. I came to Marvel, I had 39. Marvel needed me. And I did my first year at Marvel volunteering, the whole year. I blended all of Elaine's material into Marvel School when I got to the school district, when it got there, you know. And I just loved the community. Now, I'm originally from Monroe County. I grew up in Claretville, Arkansas. But I've been in Marvel so long, Marvel is where I love. And I love Elaine too, because of me doing my first. This was my student down there, one of my students down there. And I just love Phillips County. I don't want those kids to have to go any further to try to get an education. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning. And thank you also for your service to the kids of Arkansas. We appreciate your service. Ms. Johnson? Oh, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. It's hard, I can't...
That is okay. I know I got bad hair, right?
I did too.
Good morning, greetings to all of you. I'm here to represent the pastor of the Marvel Elaine School District. I'm also standing here as a graduate of Marvel. I want to speak on behalf of the district. I do know that education is our top priority. However, I think we have to factor in the mental part as well as the educational part. I'm speaking as an individual that lived 15 miles south of Marvel when I went to school. I lived down in a field that I had to walk out of the field, stand on the rock road, and wait for the bus. By the time I got on the bus, I'm wet. Nobody wants you to sit beside them, all right? So I had to deal with all of that just on my way to school, 15 miles, thinking about, I'm wet, nobody wants me to sit beside them. So when I finally get to school, I'm in no shape to even learn nothing, because I've dealt with all of that just getting to school. I do know education is important, but there are some other factors that you may not have ever experienced, that I know about, that concerns me once I get to school. As a pastor, I already know, you're not going to hear nothing I say to you if you're sitting in church hungry. All right? Feeding you the word is just not going to be received if you've got other things on your mind. Life-wise in school, I am a witness that traveling that far, by the time you get to school, dealing with all that you've had to deal with, just to get to school. And then you get there, teachers want to know, why, Mr. Johnson, you sleeping, all of that. Well, look, I had to get up at 4:00. Had to walk down the road half a mile, standing in the rain till the bus came. Deal with all of the challenges. You know, I don't know if you've ever rode a bus before, but people on the bus can be mean. You know, calling your name and all this kind of stuff. So I do want you to consider that as well as education. I gotta be in condition to be educated, all right? I cannot be educated if I got all of this other stuff that's bombarding me. All right? At least consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, Ms. Burrell?
Good morning. I'm a little tired, Burrell. I'm also a part of the organization that Mr. Gage and Ms. Scafe came to you from. I'm a 1999 graduate of Marvel, and I'm still a resident in Marvel. My concern is, I want to challenge you all to ride the bus from Elaine. Not in your car, get on the bus. Ride it from Elaine, and we may have children just farther south of Elaine. Ride the bus from there to Marvel. Stay at the school. Ride the bus back. That way, you will get the experience of what the children have to go through to get to school, from school. I also feel like we can make it. You all's help, Marvel can make it. Another concern is, 350 students. If the plan is to close down schools with less than 350 students, soon there will be no schools in the Delta, none. So I feel like that needs to be addressed as well. But I pray that you all find in your hearts to leave Marvel Elaine where it is and just give us the necessary help that we need.
Thank you, Ms. Burrell. Ms. Sims? Maybe that's not... Laverne Sims, yes.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of the concerned citizens of Marvel. And I graduated in 1976. Great education. My mother was single. And our children, we want them to have the same opportunity in Little Rock, Jonesboro, all of these places that is not in the rural area. The rural area is getting beat up. Right now, we're getting beat up with education. We're getting beat up with jobs. We're getting beat up with parents not knowing how to be parents. They have to be taught. They have to have clearance. Because if you have a parent that does not know algebra, your children are not going to know it either. So we're asking that you all get a better understanding about the rural area. It's about Marvel Elaine. Our children are great. Great things have came out of Marvel. And all we are asking... All we are asking is that you all help us, help us. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Francie Fields, is that right? Good morning.
Good for the opportunity to even speak, because I'm a great grandma. But I always had Marvel. I lived out in the country, but Marvel is really home. I just wonder why that we have now all the schools closing. A long time ago, schools in every community, and there weren't as much money being changed as there is now. So what is the reason why? We're closing all the schools in all the communities. And children have to leave home in the dark. And get back home, it's almost dark again. That's very hard on children. They don't have any time to learn the social side of life. They can't play with each other or anything. You just have them playing ball, and sitting in class, and eating lunch, and sitting still, which is very hard. Now, I know, I went to school in Post Hill. And then we left here and went to Michigan. But at third grade, I could read anything I wanted to read. And I could do math. So I don't understand how all these changes are being made. And children still, some of them are not getting any care, don't know how to read like they should. Or you can't get enough teachers. Some of those teachers probably hadn't went to college, but they taught us how to read and do math. You know, we didn't do everything. But now, it's like you have nothing. And you took prayer out of school, and you got guns in school. Even little kids bring guns to school. If you put more kids together, it's going to be even worse, chaos. So I think, I'm hoping that all of you will have it in your heart to let the schools stay in the community and not have to bus kids 80 miles, 100 miles, and all that. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I have one more, sign up for public comment. But the way I'm reading it, you want to speak on graduate Arkansas? Mr. David Jones?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So are there any more public comments? Okay, so that's all of our public comments on Marvel Elaine. Thank you, community, for being here this morning. We really appreciate you taking your time to drive. I know it was a hard drive down this morning, and we really appreciate you. Because the more information we have, the better our decision will be. So we appreciate you taking the time. And again, next month, we will plan on being in your community to listen to you and to hopefully have some ideas from the department of where we can go forward from here. So any board members have any comments or anything? Okay, all right. So thank you. We'll take about a five-minute break right here, I think. That'll give you time to move around.
going to make a site visit next week.
Okay, so y'all are working on it then?
We are working on it.
Perfect. That's all I need. All right. Anyone else have a question or concern on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, then I'm ready for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Henderson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are going to move on to our action agenda. Ms. Smith, you're up again. First item is our evaluations of the educational service cooperatives.
So on the agenda, I submitted two different evaluations, one for Wilbur Mills Co-op and one for Archford Co-op. Both were favorable evaluations, doing a great job in our state, supporting our schools. And so I just asked for an approval of the evaluations.
Any questions on the evaluations? Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. How many of the co-ops have we done now? Or have you all done?
Twelve. I have three more that are scheduled in April. And then we'll be done.
I do have a specific question about Archford. Archford houses Virtual Arkansas, is that correct?
They house one of our grants for Virtual Arkansas, and yes, that's where most of the grant goes through.
Okay, so are there, the Virtual Arkansas, are they employees of the Archford Co-op?
Yes.
Okay. I know there was a little bit of that mentioned here. Has there been any thought as to whether we need to do a further evaluation of that program specifically? Would that be included in here, or would that be sort of a separate time?
Yeah, so that goes with the Virtual Arkansas grant. So we do give that program funding. That is a separate grant that runs through the Co-op, and there's an evaluation that goes with that grant. So each year, they have to submit a report to us, their outcomes, their goals, that type of thing. So I can pull that for you.
Okay. And then, as you know, as conversations have been having about Learns that passed, there's an emphasis on reading, as we all know. There's a, in the legislation, that there'll be reading coaches. Can you speak to me a little bit about reading coaches at co-ops currently, and what they do? And if they were, I mean, I know this is sort of a more general evaluation, and not an evaluation specifically of each program in the co-ops. But if y'all were able to dig into the literacy?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, when, actually, when we launched Rise Arkansas, one of the pieces, one of the things that we did is we made a commitment to put three literacy specialists at each of the co-ops throughout the state. So we refocused our grant funding for literacy specialists during that time to support that training. And so all the co-ops have three literacy specialists that are directly tied to the Rise Arkansas, and supporting their areas specifically. The main emphasis in the beginning was getting the training to get our teachers to proficiency and awareness. And so you saw our K-2 Rise Academies, the 3-6 Academies, and then the awareness training. Part of that was direct coaching in those classrooms with teachers who were going through that smaller K-2 piece. I think now with Arkansas Learns, and plus, we're at the end of the time where teachers had to have proficiency in that initial training. Most of our teachers have had that training. I think what Arkansas Learns really does for us right now is it's the accountability of outcomes. Just because you've been trained, what are you implementing in your classroom? And how do we support that work? So I think the vision of being able to provide direct coaches in schools to actually support teachers in actual true implementation for student outcomes is the next phase. And so what that exactly looks like today, and how the co-ops play a role in that, I'm not 100% sure. But they're our partners, and I'm sure they'll be at the table as we kind of design that plan.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Stacia, I noticed that they only have, like, based on demographics, they only have, like, two post-secondary education institutions. How's that determined aside?
Those are partners that they themselves have connected with. So Archford does a lot of work with, like, UCA. That was one of their main partners in some of the colleges in Conway area. And a lot of that's by proximity. And then when you look at Wilbur Mills and partnerships with, like, Harding, you know, again, proximity. So a lot of that is proximity-related.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. McFerrigan?
I was looking at these annual user satisfaction surveys, and they were both rated very high. My question is, several of the line items, like dyslexia, some of the math programs, haven't gotten as higher rating. Does the department look at that and go, gosh, maybe we need to focus a little bit more on those areas that they haven't ranked as high?
We actually, we do. So I'll talk specifically about dyslexia. One of the things that we did is when we annually looked to see how many students are being served in an area that local districts are reporting. We look for districts who are reporting extremely low numbers or have low outcomes. And our dyslexia specialist here, Vicki King, works directly with those co-ops and those districts to make sure, one, that we're actually doing the screening, that kids are getting identified. And a lot of that's based off of survey data like that.
Any of?
That's great information to have.
And I will say too, in debrief sessions, so each time we do an evaluation, I sit with the Co-op Director afterwards, and we go through some of those data points as a group, and what their next steps are. And part of the evaluation has to do with them themselves doing a needs assessment and determining their next steps and how they respond to that. And they have to show evidence of that. Like, what did they, oops, what did they show before that was low? And what have they done to respond to that data? So that's part of it.
All righty, thank you.
Any others? I have one question, and it's really not about the co-ops, but it's going back to what you were talking about with the Rise training. And we're at the end of the cycle, and hopefully, our teachers are trained. So what will it be going forward? Are we relying on institutions of higher learning? Are we still going to actively train and make sure our teachers are prepared?
So I do believe that Arkansas Learns, with the emphasis on the 120 coaches supporting our schools, is part of that work. While we have, it has to be a comprehensive plan that does include higher ed, making our higher ed programs better, not better, making our higher ed programs more laser-like focused on making sure that we're teaching the science of reading and what that looks like. I think it also encompasses our high-quality instructional materials, making sure the materials that are being used in our classrooms are aligned to the science of reading, and teachers are implementing it with fidelity. That's some of the work that Dr. Pride's team has done a phenomenal job with. And I think that's where we have to grow. I mean, I think I've shared with you before, if I had to do it all over again, I would have made sure and coupled the high-quality instructional materials on the front end with our training. We brought people in, we gave them training on science of reading and best practices, and sent them back to their classrooms with balanced literacy programs. And so teachers were left on their own to try to figure out, what do I do different in my classrooms with materials and resources? And that's where you have a lot of teachers creating their own. You get out of a clear scope and sequence. And we're asking them to do something a little bit different than they've been doing before. So if I had to do it all over again, if we, in other states that we talked to about that, that's one of those pieces we talk about. Pair it with a high-quality curriculum as you're going through and getting that training.
Okay. All right. Any, thank you. Any other questions? All right. So we do need a motion to approve these evaluations. Okay, have a motion by Ms. McFerrigan?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we move Marvel Lane, so we are to the charter amendment request. Ms. Wagner?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So the first one up is, it is Arkansas Lighthouse. And Lighthouse is coming to us to amend their charter to transfer three of their campuses to Friendship. And with that transfer of those campuses, they're also asking to reduce their enrollment cap by 500. And this went to the cap. The cap had no issues with it. We spent a long time going through everything, piece by piece. There's a transition plan in place. Both sides have come to the table and talked through just about, I think, everything they can. And we have no issues with it, and so it is just up to this board to review or not review the cap's decision.
All right. Any questions on this transfer? Okay, your motion is to, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Woods?
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, why are they reducing their cap?
So they're reducing their cap because they are, the kids that are transferring, it's reducing by those kids that are transferring out of that school.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, your motion would be to review or not review Arkansas Lighthouse amendment.
I have a clarifying question too. Sure. So just to review, how many charters does Lighthouse currently have? How many schools?
So they currently have six.
And it's all within that one charter?
Yes, it's all within the one charter.
So there'll be three campuses remaining?
Yes.
On their charter?
Yes, that are all within Jacksonville, which the Lighthouse Director is actually here as well.
And we're not changing any of the, any of the pieces of their current charter with those three schools?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Henderson not to review.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are going to move on to our action agenda. Ms. Smith, you're up again. First item is our evaluations of the educational service cooperatives.
So on the agenda, I submitted two different evaluations, one for Wilbur Mills Co-op and one for Archford Co-op. Both were favorable evaluations, doing a great job in our state, supporting our schools. And so I just asked for an approval of the evaluations.
Any questions on the evaluations? Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. How many of the co-ops have we done now? Or have you all done?
Twelve. I have, we have three more that are scheduled in April. And then we'll be done.
I do have a specific question about Archford. Archford houses Virtual Arkansas, is that correct?
They house one of our grants for Virtual Arkansas, and yes, that's where most of the grant goes through.
Okay, so are there, the Virtual Arkansas, are they employees of the Archford Co-op?
Yes.
Okay. I know there's a little bit of that mentioned here. Has there been any thought as to whether we need to do a further evaluation of that program specifically? Would that be included in here, or would that be sort of a separate?
Yeah, so that goes with the Virtual Arkansas grant. So we do give that program funding. That is a separate grant that runs through the Co-op, and there's an evaluation that goes with that grant. So each year, they have to submit a report to us, their outcomes, their goals, that type of thing. So I can pull that for you.
Okay. And then, as, you know, as conversations have been having about Learns that passed, there's an emphasis on reading, as we all know. There's a, in the legislation, that there'll be reading coaches. Can you speak to me a little bit about reading coaches at co-ops currently, and what they do? And if they were, I mean, I know this is sort of a more general evaluation, and not an evaluation specifically of each program in the co-ops. But if y'all were able to dig into the literacy?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, when, actually, when we launched Rise Arkansas, one of the pieces, one of the things that we did is we made a commitment to put three literacy specialists at each of the co-ops throughout the state. So we refocused our grant funding for literacy specialists during that time to support that training. And so all the co-ops have three literacy specialists that are directly tied to the Rise Arkansas, and supporting their areas specifically. The main emphasis in the beginning was getting the training to get our teachers to proficiency and awareness. And so you saw our K-2 Rise Academies, the 3-6 Academies, and then the awareness training. Part of that was direct coaching in those classrooms with teachers who were going through that smaller K-2 piece. I think now with Arkansas Learns, and plus, we're at the end of the time where teachers had to have proficiency in that initial training. Most of our teachers have had that training. I think what Arkansas Learns really does for us right now is it's the accountability of outcomes. Just because you've been trained, what are you implementing in your classroom? And how do we support that work? So I think the vision of being able to provide direct coaches in schools to actually support teachers in actual true implementation for student outcomes is the next phase. And so what that exactly looks like today, and how the co-ops play a role in that, I'm not 100% sure. But they're our partners, and I'm sure they'll be at the table as we kind of design that plan.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Stacia, I noticed that they only have, like, based on demographics, they only have, like, two post-secondary education institutions. How's that determined aside?
Those are partners that they themselves have connected with. So Archford does a lot of work with, like, UCA. That was one of their main partners in some of the colleges in Conway area. And a lot of that's by proximity. And then when you look at Wilbur Mills and partnerships with, like, Harding, you know, again, proximity. So a lot of that is proximity-related.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Stacia, I noticed that they only have, like, based on demographics, they only have, like, two post-secondary education institutions. How's that determined aside?
Those are partners that they themselves have connected with. So Archford does a lot of work with, like, UCA. That was one of their main partners in some of the colleges in Conway area. And a lot of that's by proximity. And then when you look at Wilbur Mills and partnerships with, like, Harding, you know, again, proximity. So a lot of that is proximity-related.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. McFerrigan?
I was looking at these annual user satisfaction surveys, and they were both rated very high. My question is, several of the line items, like dyslexia, some of the math programs, haven't gotten as higher rating. Does the department look at that and go, gosh, maybe we need to focus a little bit more on those areas that they haven't ranked as high?
We actually, we do. So I'll talk specifically about dyslexia. One of the things that we did is when we annually look to see how many students are being served in an area that local districts are reporting. We look for districts who are reporting extremely low numbers or have low outcomes. And our dyslexia specialist here, Vicki King, works directly with those co-ops and those districts to make sure, one, that we're actually doing the screening, that kids are getting identified. And a lot of that's based off of survey data like that.
Any of?
That's great, that's great information to have.
And I will say too, in debrief session, so each time we do an evaluation, I sit with the Co-op Director afterwards, and we go through some of those data points as a group, and what their next steps are. And part of the evaluation has to do with them themselves doing a needs assessment and determining their next steps and how they respond to that. And they have to show evidence of that. Like, what did they, oops, what did they show before that was low? And what have they done to respond to that data? So that's part of it.
All righty, thank you.
Any others? I have one question, and it's really not about the co-ops, but it's going back to what you were talking about with the Rise training. And we're at the end of the cycle, and hopefully, our teachers are trained. So what will it be going forward? Are we relying on institutions of higher learning? Are we still going to actively train and make sure our teachers are prepared?
So I do believe that Arkansas Learns, with the emphasis on the 120 coaches supporting our schools, is part of that work. While we have, it has to be a comprehensive plan that does include higher ed, making our higher ed programs better, not better, making our higher ed programs more laser-like focused on making sure that we're teaching the science of reading and what that looks like. I think it also encompasses our high-quality instructional materials, making sure the materials that are being used in our classrooms are aligned to the science of reading, and teachers are implementing it with fidelity. That's some of the work that Dr. Pride's team has done a phenomenal job with. And I think that's where we have to grow. I mean, I think I've shared with you before, if I had to do it all over again, I would have made sure and coupled the high-quality instructional materials on the front end with our training. We brought people in, we gave them training on science of reading and best practices, and sent them back to their classrooms with balanced literacy programs. And so teachers were left on their own to try to figure out, what do I do different in my classrooms with materials and resources? And that's where you have a lot of teachers creating their own. You get out of a clear scope and sequence. And we're asking them to do something a little bit different than they've been doing before. So if I had to do it all over again, if we, in other states that we talked to about that, that's one of those pieces we talk about. Pair it with a high-quality curriculum as you're going through and getting that training.
Okay. All right. Any, thank you. Any other questions? All right. So we do need a motion to approve these evaluations. Okay, have a motion by Ms. McFerrigan?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we move Marvel Lane, so we are to the charter amendment request. Ms. Wagner?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So the first one up is, it is Arkansas Lighthouse. And Lighthouse is coming to us to amend their charter to transfer three of their campuses to Friendship. And with that transfer of those campuses, they're also asking to reduce their enrollment cap by 500. And this went to the cap. The cap had no issues with it. We spent a long time going through everything, piece by piece. There's a transition plan in place. And both sides have come to the table and talked through just about, I think, everything they can. And we have no issues with it, and so it is just up to this board to review or not review the cap's decision.
All right. Any questions on this transfer? Okay, your motion is to, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Woods?
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, why are they reducing their cap?
So they're reducing their cap because they are, the kids that are transferring, it's reducing by those kids that are transferring out of that school.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're, your motion would be to review or not review Arkansas Lighthouse amendment.
I have a clarifying question too. Sure. So just to review, how many charters does Lighthouse currently have? How many schools?
So they currently have six.
And it's all within that one charter?
Yes, it's all within the one charter.
So there'll be three campuses remaining?
Yes.
On their charter?
Yes, that are all within Jacksonville, which the Lighthouse Director is actually here as well.
And we're not changing any of the, any of the pieces of their current charter with those three schools?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Okay, we ready for a motion?
I have a motion not to review.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Henderson not to review.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So the next, we would have place for those kids to go?
Yes. The next is where they're headed to, which is Friendship Spire Academies of Arkansas. So they are going to be receiving the three Lighthouse campuses, which includes increasing their cap by 500, because they are receiving those students. Another thing they have asked for is a request for, to waive the A through F scores for the Capital City campus that they will be receiving. And that is something that we are actually required to do by law, because they're, because it's a, excuse me. It's a transfer, and they're opening a new LEA at that location. So, but it will only be for one year, and it will only be for the one Capital City location. It won't be for their charter as a whole. But again, transition plan is in place. We went through all of this, piece by piece. The cap is very confident in their ability to do this. And if you have any questions of Friendship, they are all here as well.
Okay. Any questions for Friendship?
Yeah, I think reading through the materials, and in the prior meeting, there is a strong plan in place. I just want to just take the moment to emphasize the parent communication and what that looks like as things go on. And I think from what I've seen, that that is certainly there, but make sure that's very strong in the months to come.
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
The only question I had was regarding Friendship's request to waive letter grade accountability for this North Little Rock campus next year. But it's my understanding that if they request that waiver, it must be granted under the law. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So there's really no discretion on this board on granting that?
No.
Okay.
It's in the law that they requested. So, I mean, unless you wanted to review it for some reason. But it is in the law that since they are doing a, it is a voluntary transfer that was written into the law, I believe, in 2021. So since it's a voluntary transfer, and they're going to be opening a new LEA at that location, that they get a waiver just for that location. Now, it's not for their entire charter, it's just for the one school.
This transfer, and thinking about the Charter Office keeping an eye on the transfer, when will this charter be back up for review?
So, I'll turn that, I mean, we monitor them constantly. They're going to continue to be monitored. But as far as, Lighthouse was just renewed for 10 years, correct? Friendship, I'm sorry. Friendship was, Mr. Harris was out here.
Okay. You're the expert.
He was, they were just renewed for 10 years, but we will keep, we'll keep an eye on them, we will be monitoring them. You know, and anytime, of course, that they want to reach out for support, our office is always here to assist. But we will definitely be keeping an eye on everything.
So during the transfer process, y'all are going to keep a close watch on what goes on and how the kids are performing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so remember, your motion is to review or not review?
I'll move to not review.
I'll motion to not review. I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Woods, and a second from Ms.
No, no. Mr. Wood.
I was going to get it right, and I did it wrong.
And you did it wrong.
I did it wrong. I'm sorry. I apologize. A motion from Mr. Wood, and a second from Ms. Woods. Did I do it wrong again?
No, you got it right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's always good when we can laugh at ourselves, isn't it? I hope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to accreditation violations. Ms. Kaufman, welcome.
Good morning. Deborah Kaufman, Public School Accountability.
Give them just a second to clear out. Give them just a second to clear out.
Today, I'm going to ask you to provide a citation for schools that did not meet 95% tested, or it's also called the participation rate in our accountability system. And this slide is, these slides are on your, give me a help, do you want?
It may not be turned on. Here it goes.
There we go. All right, so this requirement is a part of the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act, which was Act 930 of 2017. And that's when we made the big overhaul to ESSA, from No Child Left Behind to ESSA, and had to revamp our Arkansas accountability system to align. And so at that time, as a follow-up to the federal requirement that says that we must test all students, in our state code, it says that we must test all students. Now, some of you were here last year and you remember that I came and asked you for a waiver, because schools were struggling to get their kids back after COVID. And we said at that time, next year, there will be no waivers. So failing to test 95% is an issue, because we want a valid and reliable accountability system. And when school districts are not assessing 95%, then they are leaving students out that should be included in the accountability. Now, it certainly has an impact on our federal accountability, but specifically today, I want to talk about the impact on our state accountability, and that's in the standards for accreditation. So we did provide, I believe, ample communication to the school districts regarding the requirement to test all students. It came out in numerous commissioner memos, as I have listed here. We talked to our district test coordinators time and time and time again about the timelines. It's in our business rules that we put out publicly on our website and out by commissioner memo. So I believe that we've really gone short of just calling everybody individually and saying, hey, 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 you've gotta test. I think we've done quite a bit to communicate. What I wanted to talk to you about is, we do have written assessment policies and procedures, which has allowed quite a bit of flexibility with assessments. So there's really not valid excuses for why you can't test. Now, do we have some parents that refuse to send their child for assessment? Yes, but we have a nice, long window for assessment, and our recommendation is always test early and start makeup immediately, because you know who wasn't there. And our systems are very easy to use to monitor who has and has not taken the state assessment. We then ask, so there was one chance, take the test, note in the system whether or not the student tested and why. And then we follow up with another opportunity to make sure that we have accurately reported the reasons that a student might not test. So maybe the student didn't take the test, you now, as a school district, have an opportunity to go into the ACE correction engine in August and note with documentation any student who did not test. Who's expected to test? Everyone. And we go off of our guidance that we have, we are required by federal law and of course state law to ensure that everyone tests. So we're very clear with the documentation to school districts, who is required to test. Even a student that is absent on every day of the window for testing, six weeks, any student that's absent every day, still required to test. And we say that because you can't send somebody home and say, Sarah, go home, I'll see you in six weeks to avoid testing a student. Now, are there cases where that student might be excluded? Yes, I'll show you those. Expelled students, suspended students, students who refused to test, students that are homebound, students that had COVID, any of those things that can cause a student not to be onsite or at one of those flexible locations is required to test. So let's just start there. So, who's not required to test? If you can show documentation, the student has had a medical emergency or has been hospitalized for the entire testing window, they can be excluded. But if you said the child missed the test and then something later on happened, the window was there to test. Incarcerated students, students in residential treatment, deceased, students that withdrew before we pulled the data of who should be testing. And that's important, because as you go further into this, you'll see some schools say, well, these kids shouldn't have tested. If they had been moved out of that grade level prior to the data pool, they wouldn't have been on the list to test. If they were then corrected during the corrections window, they would have been caught then. So homeschool, private school, of course, they do not test. And then students that are in National Guard Youth Challenge, or if they're under a tuition agreement, they do not test. All we need is just some documentation to show those things, and we can exclude the students with documentation. So today, what I'm asking you to do is to do an accreditation citation status for the schools that I'm about to list for you. And the reason that we're doing it today is because we could just wait and do it with all the standards for accreditation citations. But these schools receiving a citation is basically a warning. That's all it is. They don't have to publicly report, they don't have to do anything. It's a warning. Get a plan, work your plan, right? So they are going to have to submit their testing schedules to the Office of Student Assessment by March 17th. So now, we are trying to say, test early, start your makeup as soon as possible, communicate with your parents. We will help in any way that we can to assist the school, but we have to be serious about testing, 95% or more. So today, I want to start with our first motion, and I'm requesting a motion to assign accredited citation to the 10 schools listed here, for reasons of not meeting 95% tested in both math and English Language Arts for all students.
Okay, all right. Do we have any questions before we look at a motion? Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I have a question. Once the first citation is issued, where we vote on it and prove it, what is the next step? Is there a progressive step following, or what happens at that point?
Yes, so for this school year, they would be noted as accredited accreditation citation. That would just go on their record. And what we would watch is then next year, do they repeat this behavior? So if next year, they did not test 95%, and we went through all the corrections periods, they couldn't correct it, they haven't made those adjustments, then we would come back next spring and ask you to put them on accreditation probation. So it has to progressively get more, and then after that, you know, if they continued that pattern, then you would have to make a decision about something more corrective action wise.
Thank you.
Any other, the center?
So, you said that the testing window is six weeks long. How long is the test? I mean, does it take just like a day or two days?
Five weeks.
Four, five hours.
Okay, so not a full day.
No.
Thank you.
Anything else? Dr. Moore?
Yeah, to me, this is indicative of a greater problem in some senses, in which if a student is not there for six weeks, does this sort of trigger any sort of further review? Not all of these, but with some of these, of student attendance and that conversation, what does that look like?
So we certainly haven't gone through every transcript, but we did go through some of the transcripts and looked to see what's happening. We're not seeing those kids as being absent. We're seeing, in many cases, those kids were present, but maybe they were doing an online course or something, they just did not take the test.
Because I would worry in some of these instances, that if they're not able to do that, then they're not getting educated outside, because they're not there. But you feel confident that-
No, I worry about-
Not confident, okay. Not confident, yeah.
And I want to speak specifically and give you an example. So Pine Bluff High School's under state authority, so that was one of our districts last year. All of our other schools in our districts tested 95% except one school. They didn't have their procedures tight. We didn't, we thought we were following up and ensuring that folks were getting tested. When we went back and looked at the list of kids, that they were present on other days, we didn't do our due diligence to get makeups done in that, on that campus. So when you look at all of these different districts here, most of them are more than one, it's one school within a large district or, so there's probably a procedural thing that happened at that school that they're gonna be paying attention to this next year.
I have another follow-up question too. I know, and this is something I probably should have pre-asked, but at some point, there's legislation sort of protecting counselors sometimes. I know traditionally, a lot of times, a school counselor was the one that was in charge of administering the test. Is that still the case, or because of legislation, they've sort of shifted their jobs? And who is it in most schools that's over testing?
Just coming up to help you, is that okay? Partners in this. Love it. So district testing coordinators, DTCs, are something that most districts have gone to and have pulled that away from their school counselors. Previously, you saw most counselors, they were their district's DTC. And districts where that's still occurring, they've either added a stipend in, and in some cases, you still have it, but they've pulled other administrative duties away. So, but every district has a district testing coordinator.
Does this trigger any conversations with that person in that way, and maybe in future years? I mean, that's a district personnel decision, but not as their fault, but maybe it's the role, the other roles that they have.
The assessment office is aware of each school that did not and each district testing coordinators, and they're working directly with them to make sure that they have cohesive plans, for example, again, testing windows starting, starting to test early.
So, I kind of skipped over the federal requirement, but under the federal requirement, and as we get into further on to the ones that are appealing, you'll see there's a letter that goes out to any school district that did not test 95%, not just for all students, but for any subgroup. And if you repeat that pattern twice, you go on to an automatic participation plan of action, that our School Performance Office reaches out. As Stacy said, they work very closely with our Assessment Office, School Performance and Assessment, they've been doing trainings together, they talk to people, they call people, they email people. So I, we've done a lot to try to help schools do this. But as Stacy said, it takes a very strategic plan to get all the students tested, makeup test, requires a lot of people doing their job cohesively, making sure kids are enrolled in the right grade levels at the right times, that everything, that our data are clean. If they're clean, then you don't have an issue. When it's not clean, we've got correction periods. And so if you don't respond in those, then you may be here to be on the list.
That's very challenging. Thinking about the federal side, is there any consequences with funding?
No.
Okay.
Not with funding. There is a consequence for having put in an action plan. If you were just continually participating or not participating at the rate, and you received $10.03, we could make that a stipulation.
Thank you. Sometimes in the classroom, a student had to, not had to, but received a grade maybe a parent wasn't happy with, or the child wasn't happy with, and our, and the teacher wasn't happy with, you know, that pointed out, hey, we've got a problem, let's work together and see if we can fix it. And I think that's what this will do for these districts and schools.
Correct. And I just want to point out, these districts right here did not appeal.
Yeah.
So they, I mean, they did not appeal. So they have recognized and they're accepting that the citation.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Wood?
I appreciate the point you just made, because that differentiates my approach to who we're talking about. The group that didn't appeal, I don't have much to say. I will have some things to say about the group, the schools that didn't appeal. But in general, we talked about the citation, you know, it's just a warning and this and that. But does it impact their school accountability rating?
As in A to F?
Correct.
No. Not at this time.
But it does impact, when students don't test, that does impact, because it affects the job.
It might affect their overall SS School Index, which is directly attributed to their letter grade.
So yes?
Yes.
Okay.
But not as in, it's not one of the specific considerations, it's just part of the overall assessment accountability system.
Okay, so it's just part of the larger algorithm, as opposed to a specific line item like deduction or something?
Correct.
You get two points deducted from your overall score because you didn't meet the 20, 95%. That's not, right, I understand. So it just changes the, I don't know, it's complicated, but it can have a, it can have an impact.
Correct. It has an effect in the denominator of achievement. So you see weighted achievement in our SS Index score.
But it's not because of the failure to meet 95%, it's because the students didn't test. The citation doesn't have an impact on the score?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Song?
Is there a difference in how you approach the citation when we're looking at these schools that are close to the 95 or even in the 90s versus 42? Is there a different approach with that, or is it all just below 95?
So for the citation, it is below 95 for math and English Language Arts for all students. That's the standard.
Anything else? Okay, we're ready for a motion, and this would be the motion to apply the cited status.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wood actually asked my identical question, but I was just gonna, to clarify, are we citing the district, or are we actually citing the school?
You're actually citing the school.
Okay. And then my second follow-up was whether or not it affected their letter grade, but he answered that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're ready for a motion.
I have a motion for a cited status.
Sided status?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Henderson?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Woods. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
On our next item, I believe, our attorney is coming to give us the guidelines.
Hello again.
Good morning.
Good morning. So on these appeals, I'll give you guys the procedure. So, everyone timely appealed, and I believe that all of the districts are either, I don't know if anybody's present in person, but they're either present or on Zoom. And so what we will do is, the board will swear everybody in who is testifying, except the attorneys. And the division shall have 20 minutes to present its case to you guys, and then the appealing school district shall have 20 minutes to present their case. After that, you may pose any question to any party, and then you deliberate and discuss, and then we take a vote, and then we'll have a written order after that.
Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and swear in, what, we got six of these, or five? Five?
We've got four, so there are four districts, five schools, so five individual appeals.
Okay, so if you're planning on speaking in any one of these five schools or districts, would you stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
I do.
Thank you. All right, so first one is Dumas?
Yes. Dumas High School, as you can see, did not meet 95% tested for English Language Arts and Math. This is the first time since 2018 that they have fallen into this grouping. And they started testing on April 25th, was, which was the second week of testing, not the first week. They did not submit any corrections during the corrections window, so they didn't come back and say, oh, we have a group of kids we need you to look at, anything like that. The superintendent did certify, there are no corrections, you have to go into the system and certify, the superintendent does. And they have not submitted any type of corrective action plan. You will see the letters that were sent to them on your agenda and the letter that they sent back in the appeal. I can talk to the six students. We did go over their letter and put student one, student two, to protect any student names. The students, we did look at all six of those, they were never submitted during corrections or during the testing window. But we did go back and pull each transcript. Each one of those six students do show that they were in the 11th grade last year, but what's interesting, they had taken the 10th grade test the year prior. So why they were enrolled as 10th graders last year doesn't make any sense to us whatsoever, other than they have an issue with clean data, which could have been cleaned up during the corrections period. But now, it's gone much further. So without a correction plan, to know how they would continue to have accurate data in their systems, we're stuck with this issue. So even removing those six kids, it would have improved their math score of percent tested above 95, but it would not have raised their English Language Arts enough if those had been approved. And Superintendent Camille Starett is the superintendent there. I'm not sure who's online.
Do we have someone online from Dumas?
Yes, we have, this is Dr., yes, this is Dr. Starett, Superintendent. I have several online. I have our district test coordinator, Dr. Arthur Tucker, and we also have representation from Dumas High School here.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we have, first you have a presentation you would like to make.
Just a point of clarification first, the data speaks for acceptance, and if I, if we had known that we had to withdraw the appeal, we would have. But part of my issue is the way that our policy states that a student must have a number of credits in order to be certified as a reached level of sophomore, junior, senior, so forth. And that caused some of the confusion, which we've shown that up this year. So we are, that's just a point of clarification, and I think we have this straightened out.
So you found the problem and you're addressing it, then it sounds like?
Yes, we are.
Yes. If I, I'm the counselor and the building test coordinator. For those six students, when I was advised that there were two ways that we could roll them up, and I didn't roll them up at semester necessarily in East School, I just put the notes in there. And I thought I understood in the portal- And I thought I understood in the portal that I just had to check, did not test or something. This year, I completely did it the opposite way. Any students that rolled up at semester have already been rolled up in East School. I have, am triple, quadruple checking the roster in the SPAR portal to make sure that those are the students that will be testing and that it has not pulled in any extra students that should not be testing. I'm checking that daily, actually. I have, we're testing the first week, making sure that we have plenty of time to do makeups because the other students, if you saw, there was suspensions, there was a lot of absences, there was a surgery. And so we've also talked as a building that no suspensions, none of that will take place during the week of testing. We've already gotten together our testing schedule. I've sent that to Dr. Tucker, our district test coordinator. And I've already started working with my teachers, making sure who's going to be testing where. I've already started working on the PMPs. I'm trying to get everything done early this year, making sure that, you know, we don't miss a beat and that none, this doesn't happen again.
You have made Ms. Kaufman smile. She is over here, that's exactly what she wanted to hear. Any?
Good morning, I'm Jacob, Jacob Lainhart on the high school principal. You don't have to meet. I think Dr. Tucker and Ms. Brandy has pretty much clarified the issue in it. I know that one thing that I'd like for you guys to take into clarification is, is that in the schools and stuff that I hear that you guys were talking about, we do have a lot of turnover down here. And you get into the positions as high school counselors or other guidance counselors and jobs, it's a lot of turnover. And we work diligently in that testing. There's a lot of technical things that go into testing with students and coding students and accommodations that go into students. And when we call the co-op, between the co-op and the State Department on regulations, what to do, how to do it, it can be things missed, you know? And so I just ask that you guys take that into consideration when getting into, when you have testing, you have people that are put into building-level testing coordinator positions or district-level testing coordinating positions, it's their first year. So that's my script.
Does the district have anything else? From what I'm hearing, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, we don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I do, when it comes to the corrections, I think that goes back to what Mr. Lainhart was saying. I was unaware, actually, that I had to go in and do corrections. I think there was a lack of just communication on our part there. I didn't know if that was my responsibility, if Dr. Tucker was doing that. And I think that just really got missed. And that's another thing that we're going to make sure this year, we know whose responsibility that is and if there's corrections to be made. In the system, we do that in a timely manner.
I think that's the purpose of the citation, is to get your attention and to get you on the path that it sounds like that you're already on. So we appreciate that, and I don't expect, from what I'm hearing, that you'll be on the citation this next year if y'all follow through with that. Let's see if there are any questions with, from the board. Okay, Ms. Hunter?
I just want to clarify one thing. At any point during the process, a district can log in and see their progress toward the 95%. Is that correct? Or do they have to wait till the end of the six-week period to see if they've achieved 95%?
They can see within the testing portal who has tested and who has not, yes.
So at any point in time?
Yes.
The data is?
Yeah, because you have to load the students into the system because it's an online test, and so it shows you who has completed the assessment and who has not.
Okay, so no surprises. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah. Dr. Moore?
When we're talking about 11th grade students, are we talking about the ACT? 11th grade students, we're talking about the ACT?
No, this is only for ninth and 10th grade, in their case, for ACT SPAR.
Okay, so the six students here, which is, this is very difficult in a small district, but the six students here are students who they're saying shouldn't be classified in 10th grade.
Correct.
Had they gone through the correction window, would that have been their chance to clear that up at that point in time?
Actually, if they had won, as Ms. Brandy said, if she had entered that into East School, the students would never have pulled up number one. Number two, if they had submitted those during corrections, we would have excluded those kids.
Okay.
But it's a part of accurate data keeping, accurate data reporting.
Okay, and 11th grade, the ACT, that's not included as part of this?
That is not included in this.
Because it's not required?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunter, you have another question?
I have one more question. And this 95%, that is for both, that is ELA and Math? So if they were 95% or above in one category and below in the other, they would not be here today?
They would not be here today, and we would have taken care of it with our support.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we need a, the correct motion would be to, they're asking for a waiver, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so help me with the correct motion, what we needed to hear.
So the correct motion would be to either approve the department's recommendation to cite them, give them the accredited cited status, or to sustain the appeal.
Okay. All right. I just have a question here. Okay. I'm having a hard time deciding because, I mean, at this point in time, there are no real consequences for getting that citation. But potentially, would that district get a little bit more support in making their plan for next year? There are no negative consequences at this point in time.
There's not a negative consequence at this time. We support any school at any time. So we're trying to reach out, help them. I think Ms. Brandy's just explained everything that needs to happen. So it's about putting in those proper procedures within the school. We're, listen, we're available by phone 24/7. So we'll help anyone, I've got team members that go out to schools that request support. The issue is, once you start the citation, next year, if they're still doing the same thing with the same standard, then we would request probation, which gets a little more.
So if, so if we waive this or suspend this?
Then we start all over.
And next year they do the same thing, then they can't be placed on probation?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Dr., Mr. Henderson?
Just for my own clarification, do I understand, do I understand you say that if the six students wasn't factored in the equation, that the scores wouldn't reflect a overall input on that as well?
That's correct. They would not have been here today. They would have just, we would have been dealing with them under the federal accountability, but not under standards for accreditation. So they, they still have not met their, the expectation of our state or federal. That's a fact. But in this particular issue, and that's why we have all of these documented stages to ensure that school districts are recording the most accurate data.
Can I follow up on that? I don't think I understood what was just said there. If we were to give them credit for the six that by the time the test came around, were actually 11th graders, they wouldn't be here today?
That's correct.
So by my math, they would have had 91 total students instead of 97. And they would not have met the ELA 95% testing requirement, but they would have met the 95% on Math. So given that, they would not be here?
That's correct.
If you meet 95% on one of the two, then you don't come to this?
Then you don't come for a standards violation. You still, you still suffer all of the consequences under the federal, and we still reach out and try to support you. We've sent everything that we can do otherwise. But to come to you for a standards for accreditation citation, it's very explicit in the standard.
So what the, and I'm going to use the citation or warning does, it gets the attention of the district and says, hey, you've got a problem. And you can hear from the district presentation, it's got their attention, and they are addressing the problem. If you let it go, then, you know, if you have a problem and, you know, you're not aware of it or you're not paying attention to it, sometimes that problem continues.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Has anyone done the math to determine whether considerate, giving the district credit for those six students would make a difference in their D letter grade moving up to C?
It will not. It does not, this is only a standards for accreditation conversation. They have passed every correction period to change their SS index score. That, this will not affect their federal SS index score or their letter grades. Those are done. We've been through the processes. This is now just for standards for accreditation only.
Okay.
So the motion, make sure I'm saying it correctly, is to place Dumas on cited, cited status or to sustaining the appeal? Is that correct?
Yes, accredited cited.
Accredited cited, accredited cited or sustaining the appeal? Okay. Ready, clear on what the motion would be? All right, so we are ready for a motion. Dr. Moore, are you, you're reaching?
I guess this is hard because it's a small district, and so small numbers matter. At the end of the day, to me, we want to make sure students are getting served and students are where they met. And, you know, having a citation status at the end of the day is just going to make them better for next year. So I don't, I don't see a reason to sustain it at this point in time. I know it's hard, and it's hard because I would also advocate, I hate that counselors have to do that, you know, I wish districts could hire someone else who could do this otherwise. I know everyone has a lot on their plates, but at this point in time, it seems like, you know, we get this and we move on. You get a plan, and we'll be strong for next year. And there's not a solid reason to waive that, whatever the terminology is. So all to say, I like to ramble. I will make the motion to maintain the citation, or provide a citation status.
Accredited cited.
Accredited cited.
We have a motion, but Dr. Moore, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hunter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one opposed, all right. Motion passes. So from what I'm hearing, your plan is in place. You know what you've got to work on, and I, if I am hearing you correctly, I have no indication that y'all will be on this cited status next year.
Sure.
Thank y'all for being here this morning. All right, so Fayetteville, that's our next one?
Yes, Fayetteville Virtual Academy. They did use, according to the documents that we received, they did test within the full window, and they did start their testing at the beginning. They did correct, put corrections into the A system. In fact, School Performance noted that they submitted early. In their letter, you do see that they have a standard operating procedure in place to make these corrections. What is interesting about Fayetteville Virtual Academy is they did not meet 95% tested last year, which we waived that. So they're here today for accreditation citation because they still continue to not meet 95%. And you can see their numbers here. They would probably needed about three more students to meet 95% tested. And Superintendent John Colbert is your superintendent. They may have someone else online, I don't know.
Do we have someone online from Fayetteville?
Yes, it is Mary Claire Hyatt, General Counsel for Fayetteville Public Schools.
Welcome, Mary Claire.
Hi, nice to see you all. If it's all right with you, Ms. Newton, I'll move forward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for giving us an opportunity to present our appeal today. As Ms. Kaufman mentioned, we do test in the full testing window, submit, beginning in the first week of testing. We do one-on-one testing for students who need it. We try every single way possible to get kids to come in and test. As it is a virtual school, you know, we're dealing with a little bit of a different population than a traditional public school. We submitted corrections early, we submitted all the corrections that were allowable. Had the school tested three more students, as Ms. Kaufman said, we would have met the 95%. I'd like to just break down these 14 students that were not testing to give you a little bit of insight into what the district is dealing with. So one of the students of the 14 was a missing person during the time in the testing window, was eventually located, thank goodness, and relocated to a different state. One of the students withdrew to homeschool on April 18th, the day of the data pool. One of the students moved out of state right after April 18th. One of the students was moved to Mexico because of a family emergency immediately after the April 18th date. Four students refused to come in for testing, not because of their own medical condition, but because of the medical condition of someone in their household. And this was, you know, during COVID. And unfortunately, that is not an allowable medical exemption. So the medical exemption applies only for the student's medical condition. So the four students who had someone in their household who was very ill and extremely susceptible to COVID, they refused to bring their children in for testing, so that was four of the 14. One of our parents refused to bring in their child, no matter how many times we tried, because they do not believe in assessments. They believe that assessments are eroding public education. And then three refused based on a medical condition but did not provide medical documentation. And medical documentation is required to submit a correction based on an allowable medical condition. So I think, I think it's clear, just from our procedures, I mean, bringing your child in for testing is part of our parent agreement, it's part of our application, it's communicated to parents, the testing dates are communicated to parents. We had staff doing one-on-one testing in masks, sitting as far away as allowed by the testing requirements to bring in people who are concerned about COVID. We did every single thing possible, but unfortunately, some of these things that really seem like they should be allowable exemptions, like being a missing person or moving out of the state. The district doesn't, it doesn't have any ability to test someone who's living in Mexico or who cannot be found. And I think I actually missed two students, so if you're counting and realize I only said 12, let me tell you the other two. Those two were dropped during the testing window because they had missed 10 consecutive unexcused days of school and could not be located. So they were actually dropped pursuant to Arkansas law. So no matter how often the school reaches out and tries to get people to come in, sometimes there are circumstances that are not allowed as an exemption that preclude the district despite all of its efforts from being able to do that. Had we tested three additional students, we would have met that 95% and would not be here today. Of course, we'll continue to test in the first week, to test the full testing window, to really take a hard line on this with parents. But because the student population is so low, you'll see 224 students listed on the chart in front of you. Just a few students really creates a detrimental impact to the overall testing percentage. So I hope, and I want to say one thing too, is that I kind of disagree that there is no negative consequence to having an accredited cited status because school choice is a real thing, and as we know through the Learns Act, will continue, you know, school choice is going to be a bigger issue for schools moving forward without the 3% cap. And having a school with an accredited cited status definitely impacts the number of students who are going to choice in or choice out of that school or of your school district. So the public perception of that kind of designation is a real and realized negative consequence to this kind of designation. So the district would ask that you sustain the district's appeal of this designation. So the district would ask, um, that you sustain the district's appeal of this designation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have with me the principal of Fayetteville Virtual Academy and the district's director of assessment, research and accountability, if there are questions I can't answer.
Thank you, Mayor Claire. Anyone over here have a question? Over here? Dr. Moore?
Again, it's hard in a small, a school in a small district. The testing coordinator for this school, is that the same person who does the corrections?
No.
And so it sounds like, especially if some of these students were dropped, if they, if they actually truly did drop, is it, if they dropped during, they have to drop before the testing window to not count. Is that correct? It couldn't, you couldn't have gotten corrections to fix that?
They have to drop before the, that April 18th data pool. So any of the students who moved out of state, moved to homeschool, the one student actually withdrew on April 18th, um, moved to Mexico, or were dropped, uh, pursuant to Arkansas law for 10 unexcused consecutive absences. All of those students, which let me just look, is one, two, three, four, five, six of the 14, those are all students that no matter how much we tried, we could never get in contact with, or when we did, they said, we're dropping, we've moved out of state, we've moved out of the country. Um, and there was, there was no way for the district to test those six students. Had we tested those six students, obviously we would not be here.
Were there any corrections made during that window?
We did make corrections. In fact, as Ms. Kaufman said, we made our corrections early and submitted all that were allowable. Um, as Ms. Kaufman went over in her presentation during the designation of those schools that did not appeal, there's only certain, um, allowable exemptions. So for instance, a medical condition is allowable, but you're required to submit medical documentation. So if you have someone who says, I can't come in because of a medical issue, but refuses to provide you with medical documentation, you cannot submit a correction for that student. And also, we can't require families to, to produce medical documentation to us. Um, also, medical conditions of your family members are not allowable exemptions. So if we had a student whose parent, um, was, I mean, immunocompromised because they were undergoing dialysis or had cancer, and they did not want to send their student to school to test, again, this is a virtual school, so some people have chosen that during the pandemic specifically because they had medically fragile people in the home. So the four students, um, who had a family member who was immunocompromised, refused to send their students, we're not permitted to submit a correction for those students because it's not the student's medical condition. It's the medical condition of a family member.
Ms. Kaufman, I, is that list, is that a, a state list or is that a federal list?
It's a state list that we have to meet the federal guidelines of all students testing. And we are monitored and audited over those numbers. We turn over all of our corrections engines to auditors to review, to make sure that we follow those, um, written procedures.
So, so the exemptions are, are set at the state, but they meet federal guidelines?
That's correct. And, um, to come back to what Mayor Claire was saying, um, she's correct in all of that. That's why we don't request 100%. There is the 95%. There is that 5% allowance because there will be issues that can't be addressed in those written procedures.
May I ask a question, Ms. Kaufman? Are there, there is, and this being a virtual school, there's no different regulations of virtual schools. I'm actually surprised that there are not more virtual schools on these lists. Do you think that, um, you, by nature of these, you know, families are electing to stay home and so they, they aren't coming in for specific reasons? Did y'all see other issues with virtual schools that got resolved or?
We talked to a lot of virtual schools during the testing window. I'll tell you that. And they, you know, they were just trying to be creative in meeting the needs of parents. And that's why I think our assessment team has provided very clear flexibility about where the test can be provided. And, I mean, there's, there's just some things that, um, you can't account for that are very specific to a certain family or something like that. But, um, the other virtual charters met their expectations.
Yeah, there, there was not. I'd like to, I would just like to say, um, we did try and get really creative. We actually offered to go and do one-on-one mass testing with somebody who'd been already cleared negative with COVID at someone's house, and the family refused to let us in because of their medical condition. So when I say that the school tried every single thing that they could do to test these kids, um, I mean it. Um, if you take out all of the people who we couldn't test because they were out of the country or out of the state, um, or, or, um, something like that, there's only four people that we didn't test. So we would have had only four and we would have been well over the 95%. Um, so I just wanted to, to make sure you knew that, um, we also tried very hard and very creatively to test every single student.
Ms. Smith, did you have something? No? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So.
I have one. I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute. So why don't we have then an exemption? Because it seems like we have a conflict if a student drops by law after 10 days. Why don't we have an exemption for that? Because it didn't happen before April the 18th? Does that question make sense?
We, Ms. Woods, we have to establish very clear guidelines of when the data will be pulled and who will be expected to test. Um, we have to be careful not to incentivize, uh, not testing students. And so, uh, we have seen situations prior to this accountability system where students would drop or be dropped, not test, and then after the testing window come back. And so, um, it's very clear about testing all students in the guidance. And so we have to ensure that everything has been done that can be done to ensure that no one is playing a game or trying to avoid testing certain students. And, um, I think we've all seen those in prior history. I'm not suggesting Fayetteville did that at all. But, um, certainly, I mean, kids will move out of state. We know that. But, um, I think the problem that Mayor Claire has really described are parents that are refusing to allow their kids to test. And, um, there is a, a percentage of that, but I would ask is to think about what's going to be different for this next, for this spring? What's going to be different this year than was different last year?
Any other discussion?
Well, I guess discussion, that's a hard question because in a virtual setting, you know, it sounds like they did everything they could versus our other case, it was a little different. And so I don't, I don't think I'm asking for a difference for virtual schools, but I, I do see it, it's a different thing than a traditional public we're in.
What I want you to think about too is, I mean, I can feel you getting bogged here in like the, it's okay not to cite them. It's okay to cite them. We, we are following our procedures, okay? We went through, we vetted, we gave the windows. Um, we, they fell below 95%. We're following our procedures that we set forth to bring them to you to say, we're recommended citation. They're appealing to you to say, these are the reasons we didn't meet what the state requirements were. If you say, look, they're 93, but, and they were close, I'm listening to them, I think it's valid, it's okay not to cite them. We're, we're okay with that. Okay? But just know, if they show up next year, we're going to have the same conversation again. Okay? And again, you'll then have to make that decision. Did they do everything they, they needed to do? Um, and go from there. Same thing with Dumas just a minute ago. Okay? If they come back next year, we'll be having a different conversation. They got cited, or they may not show back up. So you're getting bogged. Don't, don't get bogged. If you're feeling like, you know, I think they're close, then don't, that's okay. We're, we're go on to the next one. All right? One question, Mayor Claire. Uh, do you, do you know why, um, Ms. Kaufman said that y'all didn't meet the 95% last year? Do you know why? Was it because you didn't have these procedures in place and you put them in place this year?
So I think most of it was COVID. So being a virtual school, we had a lot of people actually, um, when I was at the department, we increased the enrollment at Fayetteville Virtual Academy significantly because so many parents, um, in Fayetteville wanted their children to go to the virtual academy because of concerns of COVID. So they had a huge influx of students during COVID. Um, those students have since gone back to the, the regular classroom and were back to kind of the, um, students who are typically going to choose a virtual academy, not because of COVID and, and health concerns, but because that's what works best for their child. Um, so, so the year before was really a, we had a bunch of people who chose, who chose to go there because of health concerns, because of COVID, did not test the 95%. Now those students have gone back to the traditional classroom, um, environment with, with a couple of exceptions. And we're back to the students who, um, are there because that's the model that works best for them. And I would just like to add to, you know, as, as we said, we did test the full window. We did submit corrections. We submitted them early. We offered one-on-one. We offered to come to your house. We did, we did everything. So in terms of what we could do differently, I mean, it's to continue to do what we're doing now, which is hold parents accountable to bring kids in, offer to do one-on-one, offer to come to your house, offer to do every single thing. I don't know that the school district could have done anything differently or better and captured these kids, six of which were gone, um, out of state or out of country. Um, and, and the others, um, who was, it was a medical or just a, um, a, a held belief that testing is, is not appropriate for students. So I don't know that any, anything we had done short of going and dragging a student into school, which we can't do, would have allowed us to test, to test these students. So I think we're in a little bit of a different position than some that are here because there was an issue with the testing coordinator or kids were expelled during the period or suspended during the period. Um, it, those, those were not our reasons. Our reasons were things we absolutely could not control.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Claire. So we will see if, uh, the board is ready for a motion?
Mr. Wood, I move to grant Fayetteville's waiver request.
Okay. So we would sustain, okay, sustain the, uh, appeal?
Sustain the appeal.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Wood. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. A second by Ms. McVetrich. All in favor? I'm sorry? Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I am, I am very persuaded by the, uh, the individual student situations, especially as it relates to the fact that they only needed three more students to achieve 95% and four of them, two of, one was homeless, one moved to Mexico, and two dropped as a matter of law, uh, on the first day of testing. I appreciate that Fayetteville tested every day of the testing window. I also appreciate their remediation plan, if you want to call it that, uh, and, and specifically creating an incentive for those conscientious objectors, so to speak, that, uh, students that don't show up for the annual assessment will not be approved to, uh, be exempt from final exams. I think that gives a, a, an incentive to come be a part of the annual assessment. And so I'm persuaded by Fayetteville's efforts here, and I think it would be reasonable to grant their appeal.
Okay. So we have a motion to sustain the appeal and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion, motion passes. So Graduate Arkansas?
Dan, help me out here. There you go. All right. Graduate Arkansas is the next that, um, selected to appeal. In 2018, they tested, uh, 21.62% English language arts, 28.38% in math. In 2019, they tested 7.14% in English language arts, 14.29% in math. In '20, we did not test due to COVID. In '21, they tested 10.26% in English language arts, 10.26% in math. And then you see here in 2020, um, they tested 28% in English language arts and 30% in math. And I say that to say, we're seeing some progress. So that part is good. Uh, they did test the full window as per their, uh, testing submission. They did not make any corrections in the ACE. And, um, Dr. Hatley, uh, did certify that on August the 11th, which was early in the window. So certainly corrections could have been made. Um, in the letter, uh, you'll see that the, uh, one of the issues that they addressed was that students may not have been required to test because they were not coded correctly. Um, we're not seeing that. And we also heard outside of that, that students were refusing to test because they had already taken the test twice. So I had Dr. Rola run that and we don't have any instances, um, of just running the data that we can find any student that's ever taken the ninth grade test twice or the 10th grade test twice, twice. So, um, if it, if we had, if there were any that were submitted in corrections, we would have been happy to look through those. And then of course, uh, we did not see a corrective action plan for making things better in the future. Dr. Hatley is here, if you have questions for her.
Good morning and thank you to the board for allowing us the opportunity to be here and to support the appeal. I'm David Jones, legal counsel for Graduate Arkansas. I'm also here with, um, the superintendent of Graduate Arkansas, Ms. Katie Hadley, and, um, Ms. Antoria Fitzgerald, who is the principal at Graduate Arkansas. You've heard from a number of schools, some reasons for, um, not, uh, putting the school into accredited cited status. Uh, we submitted a letter appeal. We know that you can read, so we won't regurgitate everything that was in that letter. We do think that it's important that the board understand, uh, the nature of Graduate Arkansas, the nature of the students Graduate Arkansas educates, um, and understands, um, both the challenges and opportunities that that presents. Uh, the model for Graduate Arkansas is to engage the disengaged, uh, to put things simply. Graduate Arkansas is an open enrollment, open entry, open exit, uh, public charter school that's located in southwest Little Rock. And to best help you understand the type of students who we're interested in educating and are engaging with, uh, I'm going to highlight some of the, the, um, data points, some of the demographics of those students. But before I do that, I'll simply say, it's best summed up as Graduate Arkansas is saying to the, um, education, uh, apparatus in the state of Arkansas, send us your tire, your pour, your huddled masses, and those are the students that we want to, um, concentrate on educating. Now, the demographic of the students at Graduate Arkansas is over age, under credit. Traditionally, when you see test age students or test eligible students, it's going to be from a low end of the age of 14 to a high end of 16. Well, Graduate Arkansas's typical average, um, test eligible student is going to be 17.9, eight years of age. And, um, those students will, um, be antidoteably a significant population of young parents. It's not abnormal to come, go to the graduation and to have a young mother walk across the stage with her son. It's not abnormal to go to the graduation and have a young father walk across the stage with his daughter and his own. Those students are students that are in the juvenile justice system. Graduate Arkansas has engaged with judges and parole officers from around the state and are working collaboratively with those folks to educate students who have disengaged in other school districts and are in need of specialized services, wraparound services that are provided at Graduate Arkansas in order to achieve a, a high school diploma. So that's the student, our Graduate Arkansas is working with. They're working with students who are engaged in the workforce. And not engaged in the workforce for purposes of, um, like many of us, the opportunity to have some spending money at the end of the week. And not engaged in the workforce for purposes of, like many of us, the opportunity to have some spending money at the end of the week. They're engaged in the workforce because it's necessary to sustain themselves, to sustain their, their parents and their families. So those are the type of students who you would traditionally see as a Graduate Arkansas student. If you took and pulled and accumulated the students who are students who failed to test around the state and for whom you've issued accredited-sided status today, you would see that that poll of students is the majority of the students at Graduate Arkansas. So we're different from the other schools that have come before you in that our demographic is different. And I want to give you some data points to help illustrate the points that I'm trying to make here. During the testing poll, and we've gone back and we've really looked at and tried to look at the data and understand it. And the reason we've done that is because Graduate Arkansas has never been a school that says, you don't have our attention. You, you have our, the board, the department has our full attention. And Graduate Arkansas has, has and continues to work collaboratively with the department to try to make sure these students are tested, make sure these students are educated, and finally, to make sure that these students receive a diploma. During that testing window, there were thirty-four students that were in the testing pool, pull that enrolled right during the testing pull. So traditionally, you'll have to, these are students who have disengaged in other districts and have to be re-engaged in the classroom and through different wraparound services in order to make sure that they're progressing. Those thirty-four students represent approximately, I believe, twenty-five percent of the total test-eligible students for Graduate Arkansas. Now, there were, when we looked at the data, there were approximately twenty percent of those students who had never tested within three years before enrolling at Graduate Arkansas. These are opportunities, but these are also the challenges. I want for our staff, or for you to hear from our staff about the extraordinary efforts that were made to make sure these students had the opportunity to test. And the efforts going forward that Graduate Arkansas is instituting to make sure these students have the opportunity to test. But before we do that, I want to make clear that we do not believe that it is not going to be significant to Graduate Arkansas if you issue accredited-sided status. This is a progressive, it's a progressive, from the accredited-sided status to probation, it's progressive. And we believe some of our systemic challenges, some of our systemic opportunities are going to potentially result in a adverse, in adverse consequences to the institution going forward if the accredited-sided status is issued. Instead, we, we encourage this board to sustain the appeal because we believe that there are opportunities for us to receive the support without the accredited-sided status. And with that, if we can have our, our staff talk about the extraordinary efforts that we made.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Antoria Harrison Fitzgerald.
And I'm Katie Hatley.
This year is my first year serving as the principal, as well as the district testing coordinator for Graduate Arkansas. So immediately coming in, I was able to kind of assess and look at the data that was in process and procedures that were done prior to by joining the organization. One of the things that I did note is that the Graduate Arkansas, we did test the entire testing window. We started on day one, and we tested all the way to the very end. Traveled over the state, offering different testing hubs to be able to test students that we do serve all over the state of Arkansas that have elected to be either in our high-grade or virtual program, for whatever reason. With that, I did, I'd also want to mention that although we did not submit test corrections, again, that kind of just goes back to just the limitations that we can, you know, actually submit corrections for. The list is very, very, it's, it's clean and it's clear. If you do not have the documentation to submit, you cannot. Unfortunately, on that list, a lot of our students do fall into the categories that they are going through transition where maybe in living statuses, they may be experiencing illnesses and things like that where it comes to family members or their own children. So, and those things unfortunately are just not, I guess, not a criteria that we can submit for in the testing portal.
And just to piggyback on that, as was stated, the limited options that we have to make corrections. And I always get emotional when I'm dealing with these kids because it's my purpose. The work is my purpose. We had students who lost parents, so we can't submit parents' obituaries. We had students who were shot, but the parents didn't want to provide a hospital. No, but we knew that. We had a young man who was shot in the back of both legs, discharged from the hospital and showed up to test on the first day of testing on a walker. And of course, I ran up front. And, and one thing about Graduate Arkansas, in two thousand thirteen, when we moved there, we've always had a Little Rock Police Department officer or a member of the state police at the door. We've always had a full-body metal detector. We understand who we, we elected to serve, and this is serious. So when I saw that, I asked the officer, I said, stop his mother. We need to know why he's here. And he just got discharged because we don't want, we don't want anybody to come looking for him on campus, and he was in a shootout. So she said, no, they don't know he's here. I drove the neighbor's car. You know, she may, she said, but I need him to test. Very smart young man. So behind numbers and behind student behaviors is a story that needs to be told. A lot of times, we don't get that. They don't get to tell it because of labeling. We need to be more understanding of poverty-informed communities and poverty-informed schools, as well as families. So, I mean, it's just, you know, the options are too slim for us to make corrections because it's all about the student, what that they do, but not the support that they have to provide.
Thank you. I, I want to say, thank, first of all, before we get into any of the sustain or apply the citation, thank you for what Graduate Arkansas does. You, you serve a population that is in need, and it's a great work. It's a difficult work. Every day, you face challenges, and, and, but I'm sure it's rewarding. And we, we want to say as a board that how much we appreciate what, what you're doing.
And I failed to mention that we enrolled all students who've been expelled, pending expulsion, formally incarcerated. I mean, you know, four years ago, I completely removed the discipline referral process off that campus. It's hard to suspend a student when they don't have a home to go to.
Yeah.
I suspended a young man, and it broke me because he came back the next day asking could he stay because he was living in an abandoned house. Sure, you can stay.
Yeah.
And once I saw that, I always go to my, I said, I need a washer and dryer. They said, for what? And I said, I need to wash their clothes. We need to have something for them to change into. The state board doesn't get to hear our stories much as the charter panel, but extraordinary efforts are made to educate these kids.
Yes.
I always joke and say I'm a big girl. I don't do well when I get hungry. So the kids are feel the same way. We cannot expect for their brains to kick in, and they hadn't eaten in a day and a half. So it's, it's just like I said, it's a story that needs to be told. And everything shouldn't be punitive. And one thing I failed to mention, and I, I went back to look, when Dr. Kimbrel was a commissioner in two thousand thirteen, before he left, he said, if we don't put metrics around this school, they will be before the panel every time because of who they've elected to serve. He said, we approve that charter. They've elected to serve this population. It's easy for people to say, they need to go back to their schools. They can't. I mean, they're seventeen with three credits.
Yeah.
They, they can't go back to their schools. They're over aging, under credit. And then they're in trouble. You guys, I don't need to bring up any negativity. There were some fights in some local schools last week. Three of those kids have already enrolled.
And just as the current DTC and things like that, we are very aware, aware of our responsibility. So with the data that they mentioned and things like that, you can see the growth. And we are, that is the goal every year, ninety-five percent. And that's with any assessment that we have, whether it's a local assessment or whether it's a state assessment, day-one testing. You know, we're, so with all of the assessments, just know that we do have plans in place to make sure that we are still working towards the goal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If I can make two final points.
Okay.
The hundred percent year-over-year growth in the testing. I want to make that point, I highlight that point. That's a success. But the other point I want to highlight is, as I sat and I listened to Fayetteville do its presentation, which was well-stated. The efforts that Fayetteville is undertaking, Graduate Arkansas is also undertaking, with the exception of a conversation that we've had and had to pull back on about going into homes. Our students are students who themselves aren't safe in their homes. So we then had to assess the risk and the liability and say, we can't have the teachers going into homes.
All right. We'll see if you have any questions from the board or comments from the board. Dr. Moore?
Thank you all for being here today. I've, I've been looking, do you all receive a letter grade?
That was removed.
Okay. Can you speak to that a little bit of what that process, because you are classified as a?
So it happened when Dr. Alexandria Bore was over the charter office. She came out to visit the school, and Ms. Virginia Perry is with her. She was one of the charter advisors. So they came on campus, wanted to see who we are, what we did. And, and she just said, this is not an F school. I mean, you, you got F students. So I don't, I'm not sure how that all happened. I think she was under the leadership of Doc, of Commissioner Coffin. She wasn't. I can't remember who approved it, but it was, it was all agreed and taken off.
Yeah. So, so in that sense, your school is treated differently because of the population?
Yeah. So Graduate Arkansas is treated differently under state accountability for school rating only. So they are exempt because they are a credit recovery high school. And so it's very well spelled out in our school rating rules. They are not exempt from anything federal accountability. So they get a full ESSA school index report. They have all, all of the same metrics. We don't have an approved alternate accountability system under federal guidance. But we do have, only with the school rating.
Okay.
And with that, under the ESSA in two thousand nineteen, there were thirty-eight schools at the table with that discussion, and only eight of the thirty-eight decided to have the same accountability federal as traditional schools, even though there's an option to change that or make some flex, provide some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you. So if we don't have any more discussion, you do?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yes. I came here today. I did not intend to vote to sustain your request, but I am persuaded by the tremendous amount of growth in your testing every year. And I'm sympathetic to what you did. And I've read your letter, and I understood your mission, and I'm sympathetic to the mission. But I, I came in here with this, you know, you're so far from ninety-five percent. But I, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the growth you've made in this. Keep going. My personal opinion is that we should not do anything to cast judgment on your efforts because it should be commended for how much you have grown in that. Keep going. You know, the, the goal is ninety-five percent. But thank you for, for all you do, and so that'll be my position.
Would you like to make a further motion?
I will, if, if we're ready.
Yes, I think so.
I move to sustain the appeal for Graduate Arkansas.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Wood and a second by Mr. Henderson to sustain the appeal. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dan, thank you all so much for what you do. We really appreciate it. And I know the kids appreciate it. Okay. She wants a picture, so we'll, we'll quickly, 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 we will take a picture.
Can we take a, maybe a five-minute break?
It will take a five minutes.
It will take a five-minute period.
Is that you okay?
Yeah. I think you all need to stand up.
Yes.
So the School of Innovation, is that a subset within the high school? Is that correct?
Yes, it is a school within a school.
And I think in your letter at some point you said something about those students. Are they not actually physically on campus? Or what was the issue with some of those students testing?
They are physically on campus, but they're about a quarter mile away. They're housed in a different building that's a quarter mile away from our main building.
And is that grades nine, both grades nine and 10?
I don't think he heard you.
And that covers grades nine and 10, is that correct?
It does. This year it's nine through 12.
Okay. And so what is the plan for those students to be tested this coming school year?
The plan is that we will test every student. We will go up there and physically get those students down to the main building. And we've actually done that this year with our ACT test for 11th graders and our NWA math testing. So our plan this year has gone very smoothly.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're...
If I could say something, it's not a question, but... I come at this one with a little bit of a different perspective. I've known Dr. Pickering for several years. He was the first principal at Pinnacle View Middle School when it opened a few years ago, 2016, I believe. And he has a standard of excellence about him and is a man of strong integrity. He got Pinnacle View Middle School from nothing to an A rating in four years. And it is, under his leadership, it was absolutely one of the best... It was the best middle school in Little Rock and one of the best middle schools in Arkansas. And was a place where you could know that the right things were going to be done. His leadership is impeccable. And I also very much have had a lot of dealings with the superintendent at Plaski County School District. And I can't say enough good things about Dr. McNulty either. So when these guys, you know, because of my experience with them, when they come in and they say they were monitoring it, but they were being lied to, I believe them. And when they say they've made a correction in staff to remedy that problem, I believe them. And I know that they are not hiding from accountability. And I trust that we will not see this next year from Robinson.
But I just want to be careful here, Mr. Wood, that we are not saying to any other district that we may have not sustained that we don't trust them, what they were saying, and that we trust that they are doing what they said they would do. And I don't want to let, I don't know how to say this correctly, but I don't want to let emotions get into the decision. I want us to make sure that we are always fair and we are consistent with every decision that we make. And I don't want to say to any district that we are not believing what they are saying, that we know that what they are saying is true, and we trust that they are doing what's best. Every district that comes before us, they're doing their best to do what is best for their students.
I appreciate that clarification, not at all what I intended to say.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So I very much appreciate that. I would just underline what they say.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or discussions?
So can I just make a comment here?
Yes.
And I think this underscores what you were saying. Is that what I'm hearing, at least in this context, is very similar to what I heard in Dumas. That there were some administrative shortcomings. And there is a plan to remediate those shortcomings. And that we should not see this school back here this time next year. And so, you know, for the same considerations and reasons that we moved forward with citing Dumas, I believe that this, you know, is a more parallel and similar situation. And not to discount anything that you said, but again, it's just that circumstances seem to be a little more similar. So with that, I would like to make a motion to, am I going to get it right?
Well, I'll help you.
Thank you. To accreditation citing?
Accredited citing.
Accredited citing for the Robinson High School.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Hunter to place accredited citing status for Robinson. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconding by Dr. ...
I'll second.
Okay. Had a second by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hang on. Dan, can you take me to the next slide? Okay. Still in the Plaski County School, Special School District, we have our last school to consider, and that's the Driven Virtual Academy. The Driven Virtual Academy is a district conversion authorized in 2021. And they did not submit a specific test schedule, so we're assuming that they followed the same one for the district. They did, however, make corrections during the corrections window. And as I said previously, Superintendent McNulty did certify those within the window. And that's important because lots of times we have to call the superintendent and say, "Hey, you're late. Please submit." And so that's always note, any things they're doing positive. And they did submit a corrective action plan or a statement of operations. So, but they did not meet the requirement of 94%.
So they would not, because it's a virtual, there's no past data for them as far as is this an improvement or not?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any one online from Driven Virtual?
Yes, I'm Leslie Ireland, principal for Driven Virtual Academy.
Do you have anything you would like to share?
Yes, ma'am. The first thing that I'd like to share is that this was our very first year for 100% virtual school with Plaski County Special School District. So this was our first attempt at being 100% virtual. Just before school started the second week in August, we had approximately 200 students that had been identified as good candidates for virtual instruction within Plaski County School District. After a no mask mandate was passed a couple of weeks before school started, our enrollment increased immediately to 500 students. And we had another 150 students on a waiting list. So we were immediately inundated with a huge increase in student enrollment that we had to make huge adjustments just before school starting. And what happened is that drastically changed what we had envisioned for a virtual student. We ended up being filled with students and families who were running from the mask mandate with COVID. And that's what happened with our percentage of students not tested. Those were the students who absolutely refused to come into a school building or any other public setting. We exhausted every effort, much like what Fayetteville expressed earlier. We went to the students. We tested the entire testing window. We met them anywhere we could. We stayed late to 7:00 in the afternoon and offered one-on-one sessions to our students and parents for testing. We offered every opportunity, but there were families who just absolutely refused to allow their student to test due to COVID.
Okay. We'll see if we have any questions from the board. Anyone over here?
I'm sorry, and I also want to add another...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Driven Virtual Academy is also where our expelled students go. So when the district has exhausted all efforts to keep students in the school building due to extenuating circumstances, those students also come to Virtual Academy. So we're dealing with that population of student as well, who refuse to test or participate in any way.
Okay. Anyone from the board over here have a question or a comment? Mr. Wood?
So I have the same question for you as I had for Dr. Pickering. Will Driven Virtual Academy apply incentives going forward to incentivize students to participate in the annual assessment similar to what Fayetteville is committed to as far as end of semester testing?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We've already done that. As well as, starting this year, we had orientation with every student and parent. And testing is a requirement for being a part of the Virtual Academy.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, when we see the numbers like this, you know, at smaller schools, so few students can make a big impact. But I do have concern on the idea of asynchronous learning. Do you have, how do you take attendance for these students? And is this an indicative of attendance on a regular basis with your virtual students?
We've made improvements in that area for this year as well. We have a process where parents actually have to apply for the asynchronous learning. So most of our students this year are synchronous. And we do have those who have met our criteria for asynchronous learning, but they have also committed to testing because they understand that's a requirement for being a part of Driven Virtual Academy.
Did you see a correlation between these students who aren't testing and attendance?
The students who are not, who refused to test last year were also those students that refused to participate, I mean, in anything. We have in-person events for the students. We have opportunities for blended learning. We offer a lot of opportunities where students actually come to campus for interaction with the teachers in person. Those students who refused to test last year, those were the ones who never showed up for anything, no matter what.
Okay. So in that sense, I mean, some of them might have been failing their classes, but they're still enrolled. And so that's going to make a difference to the numbers.
No, they are not still enrolled with Driven Virtual Academy. Those students who refused to come to testing, they are not enrolled because that was a part of our agreement at the beginning of this year to fix that issue, that they had to agree to come for testing. And so if they chose not to come for testing, they chose not to enroll.
It's challenging. I know virtual, obviously, for some families is the best fit, but I know there's always a lot of challenges that come with it. So thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, we are ready for a motion to apply accredited citing or to sustain the appeal.
I'd like to make a motion to sustain.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Henderson to sustain the appeal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconding by Mr. Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for being here or for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Saracini. We're going to move on and finish our action agenda. So you had a little bit of a break, so can everybody hang in for a couple more? All right. So Ms. Saracini, we have a request for a waiver from Dennis Johnson.
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner. Today, we have a request from an educator, but I just want to kind of give you a little background first. This educator was employed as a classified employee before this request to you. So I just want you to know that as a classified, per our law, it is a local waiver. Local school board waives that. And so it went before the local school board and they waived that. So I want you to be aware of that before we get into this. And so now, Mr. Johnson is in a capacity, working under Act 1240 waiver. And so that's licensed. And when it becomes licensed, then it comes before you for the waiver. And so I think it pretty much explains everything that I think you need to take notice, that it happened back in 2003. And that the law then is not what the law is now for someone that's underage.
Okay.
Okay?
Can you explain the difference from the law now and then?
So the law is now, we are not sure what it was then, but the law is now that if someone, if this happens to someone now at 18 or a year after, their name is removed. Because this happened so long ago, that's not the case because it was different laws.
Okay.
So his only recourse is to come to you to waive.
If it had happened present day, it would be automatic, it would be removed?
Once they turn 18 or a year after. I said that correctly, attorney right? Ms. Whitney?
Hi, I'm Whitney James with the department. I believe that now you would have to petition to have your name removed.
Okay.
Any questions before I hand it over to...
Ms. James, will you go through the procedures? Would you mind doing that?
I have it right here. And we haven't had one of these in a few months.
Yes.
And this is my first one. The first step is the chair swears in all of the parties that are going to give testimony, of course, other than the attorneys. Then each party will have the opportunity to present an opening statement of five minutes, beginning with the division. And I believe that we've already presented our opening.
Okay.
And then each party is provided 15 minutes to present their case, starting with the division. And of course, the chair may extend the amount of time at the request of the party. And then after both parties have presented their cases, the state board may allow each party to present rebuttal testimony. Following that, each party will be given five minutes to present a closing ending with the division. And then the state board may have discussion, questions, and ultimately make a decision.
Okay, all right. And our decision would be to either grant the waiver or deny the waiver. Is that correct?
In this case, yes, ma'am, because he does not have a license.
Correct, all right. All right, and you have anything else, Ms. Saracini?
No, I think we've taken your input, so we hope your packet this time answers your questions.
Okay, all right. Anyone who...
Chair, could I ask something, just procedurally?
Let, okay.
Okay. I was impressed with the packet that we received, very informative. Would it be possible for us to make a motion based on the packet without going through the hearing? Would the chair entertain that?
Let legal tell us.
I don't think that the rules stay one way or the other.
No objection.
If it's the correct way, huh?
At the very least, the educator or his attorney might want to make some type of statement to the board. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Keys, you have anything you want to say?
I would say, as long as I've known you, Ms. Duke, I know you love happy moments.
Yeah.
So I thought this would be a happy vote for everybody.
Okay.
But I don't have anything bad.
Okay, all right. So then...
Well, then, if it pleases the chair, I would like to make a motion to grant the waiver request for Mr. Johnson.
All right.
One moment.
I will second that. I will second that.
The state board just asked me to ask the educator or his attorney to waive his right to a hearing on the record.
Okay.
Cody Keys, on behalf of Mr. Johnson, we waive our right to a hearing.
All right.
Renew my motion.
All right. And I think I heard...
Renew my second.
Okay, I did hear a second from Ms. Woods. So we have a motion and a second to grant the waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We look forward to hearing the great things that you're going to do. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Last thing on the agenda is the appointment of a nominating committee for chair and vice chair for the 23, 24 school cycle. It's beginning on July 1. I have asked Mr. Henderson and Ms. Hunter and Mr. Wood if they would serve on that committee and have Mr. Henderson as the chair. And they have all agreed. And so they are going to figure out a time and place that meets, Ms. Freino is not here, but meets Ms. Freino's specifications. And so they have agreed to do that. And we'll bring back information in April for us. Okay? All right. Is there any new business? All right, so we're going to, we are to the report section. So we're going to go and have some lunch and then come back for reports after that. Is that agreeable for everyone? All right. So it is 12:00, 12:45? Think we can eat in 12:45 minutes? Again? Okay, be back at 12:45. Okay, be back at 12:45.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us a few more minutes for lunch. I always set time and we never get back on time, so I guess y'all just need to realize that we're always running a little bit late from lunch, but we appreciate you coming back. And those of you that are joining us online, we're going to move into the report section of our agenda. First thing, from the board, anyone from the board have something that you would like to share? No? Okay. Well, several of us went to the OEP conference and it was excellent. And Dr. McGee presented, did a great presentation on the teacher pipeline waivers, and so it had a lot of great data in it that I hope at some point, I know we've got a busy few months ahead of us, but I hope at some point that we can get Dr. McGee to come and share some of that data because I think it will help impact maybe some future decisions that this board might have to make, but he did a great job with his presentation and the data. Then, Ms. Saum?
Yes. So, this goes up to about a little over a week ago, so there'll be some extra stuff in next month because I didn't share last month, so there's some things from February and this month. So, I wanted to share some of my school visits. I was able to go down to Lee County and spend the day there at the high school and Anna Strong Learning Academy, and I loved that sign that was there when I got there. It was great. We were able to, these are the principals and the superintendent, but to meet with teachers, to see what was happening in classrooms, to see the investment in the facilities. I loved, this is their library, and the new, it was so welcoming. Children would want to go in and read and just to see everything that was being done academically, but also just the spaces that they're learning in. Children are aware of those spaces and they know when something's inviting and they want to be there to learn. So, this was just a really great visit. I wanted to talk a little bit about the picture on the left. The teacher, we were walking by, I think we went in every single classroom in the elementary school, and the teacher on the left, she said, "Come in." She wanted me to come in, and she was going over her data and her growth, and we've been talking data, and she had showed where she was earlier in the year and then was showing how she had moved students into the green, and it was so powerful for her to see the growth, her investment in her students, the work that she was doing and actually having those results to show that. And so, that was a really special moment for us to be able to enjoy that with her and celebrate her. I took some time this month to have lunch. You probably recognize both of these, they're in a lot of my presentations, my son Tucker and then one of my former students, Lilly. I got out a visit early and had time to stop by Chick-fil-A, and so I went by and had lunch with them and just hung out and again, try to just be in the schools as much as possible, even when it's my own children or former students. We had the National School Choice Week, and I am from Cabot, and so Cabot has the Cabot Panther Academy, and they're another charter that operates in one of our school districts, and they were there represented along with a lot of other schools throughout our state. So, that was a great day, and I always, I love these great teachers change lives, and if you see any of the pictures from the Teacher of the Year events, especially at the football game, everything says great teachers change lives, and I just don't think that can be emphasized enough and celebrated. I was able to, because I needed to add another thing to my plate, I was able to join this group. It's a family life action group, and it's with the Department of the Air Force, and they're just standing this up. The Army already has something similar, but there's different initiatives that they're working on to support military-connected families through the Air Force, and I'm working on the spouse employment initiative piece of it. We know military spouses are underemployed or unemployed at a higher level than their counterparts, and so while there was work being done on special education, I really felt like this was a place that I could contribute differently and connect with spouses all over the world. The lead spouse for this is in Germany. She actually lived in Arkansas, but she is in Germany right now, and so just working with all these different spouses to meet the needs of spouses across the world and keep them employed. We have a lot of military spouses that are teachers and nurses, which are high need areas, so while we might not get 28 years, a whole career out of them, while they're here, can we utilize them for three to five years to make big impact? And I always come back to, that was my situation. My husband's at the end of his career, but people were willing to take a chance on me and hire me, and I think it was probably a good chance that they took, so I'm so grateful for that, and I want other spouses to have that opportunity to use their skills to give back to our local communities. My Presidential Leadership Scholars Program kicked off in January. You probably recognize this dress, it's going to be in a few of these pictures, and we were able to connect with people from all over the U.S. There's 60 different professionals, but we actually have three Arkansans in this group, and the woman in the middle is a teacher. She's the coordinator in Little Rock School District, and so to have two educators from the central Arkansas area is really awesome. Danielle Crutchfield Cummings, and then the other woman, she works with Tyson in the northwest part of the state. And so, it was really neat for the Arkansans to get together, and again, to have two educators from this area is pretty exciting when you consider there's only 60 people from all over the U.S. And so, in January, we were in DC, and so these are just a couple of our pictures there. And then Cabot invited me to come to their middle school chess tournament, and that's my son Tucker again. I think I've said this before, I've been invited to a few of these, and I know nothing about chess, but I go and pretend I do and encourage the kids and just have fun, but it was a really great opportunity. And again, they always talk about there's no losers, there's learners, and so I just think that's just so applicable to all parts of our lives, even looking at opposition as opportunity, and we're instilling that in these young people, and it's really an important skill. The robotics tournament in Jonesboro, I stepped out earlier because my daughter is actually in Russellville today for the state tournament, but this is her little team. This is the first year that they have started this, and these educators are not getting any stipend, anything extra, they just wanted this STEM opportunity for these students. And the girls' team, my daughter would tell you, I think the next, she's in the red blazer, she would tell you, "Our robot wasn't the best, but we did this notebook, you have to do a notebook showing the planning and the process that goes into it," and then they get interviewed. And her teacher told me that she walked up to the interviewing team and said, "Hi, I'm Magnolia Saum," and shook their hand and looked in their eyes, and the other students followed suit. And she's like, "Our robot wasn't the winner, but we did the planning and we did the interview, and they were selected to go to the state tournament today." So, I don't know the results yet, but again, the skills our students are learning, my daughter never would have seen herself as someone as a part of this robotics team, this STEM opportunity, and it has just changed her mindset about what is available for her in the future and how she could use this as an adult. So, it was, I'm really excited for them and what this means for the school and the community. They've never had an elementary robotics team. It just took a few excited teachers to spend their time and resources to do this. I was able to go to Helena, West Helena, and this group was incredible. They are in the Educator Rising Program for the state, and I walked into their room and they had heard me spoke at, speak at Pine Bluff for their conference there, and so I came in and they introduced me, and they said, "We saw you, you cried in that video you showed us," and it was from when I won Teacher of the Year, and just talking about the importance of joy in education and how that looks so different depending on how you're feeling. And they said, "We want to show you what we're working on," and they took me through the room, they took us in the hallway, they explained everything, and this is the future of Arkansas education, and it is exciting when you see students this invested in what they want to do and becoming professionals. It was a really great moment that they did not know I was coming in, and they just took control of that situation and started teaching me. I was able to go into some classrooms and read and just spend time with students, and I always ask to go into our classrooms serving our students who receive special education services, and I think people are always apprehensive, you know, even though I say, "This is what I did, these are the students I want to see and be a part of," but to go into all these different classrooms, speak with these teachers, one of the teachers here said, "I'm going to be an Arkansas Teacher of the Year," and I love that. I love when people say that, because I believe it. You know, I just believe when you are that passionate and when you are going to do something extra and more to impact education in the state, I love that energy. And just more pictures of reading, meeting with students. The student on the right has aspirations about joining the military and, you know, going to West Point was something she shared, and so, you know, just knowing there's so much opportunity and she's committed to that. We talked about my husband going to the Air Force Academy and how that opened up a whole world of opportunities for him, and so I love students sharing their stories and their passion for whatever's next for them. These are members, this young man was a member of the Superintendent's Council, and he meets with the superintendent each month, and they go over concerns, good things, things that need to be fixed within the schools, and it's just great to see students contributing to improving those cultures and those outcomes for themselves and their classmates. We were able to, from February, the meeting for the Presidential Leadership Scholars was here in Little Rock. I left last week, or last month and headed down there, and it was wonderful, able to speak to President Clinton. He joined us, and because I was from Arkansas, I was able to sit at the dinner table with him, and oh my gosh, that was incredible, you just, hours of stories and talking and learning leadership from some of our presidents, those skills that they are, so his was communication, that was what we focused on, was communication. So, it was really neat and to have all of these professionals again in Little Rock and to be able to share. Tim Griffin came, Congressman French Hill, a lot of our local representatives also came and spent time with the scholars, sharing their experiences and their knowledge. That was really neat. And you can see President Clinton speaking to all of us, that's our small group on the right. It's a really, really incredible opportunity. And at the end of this month, I head to Dallas to the Bush Center, so we'll get to hear from President Bush as well. And then, this was kind of the end of where my last month was ending, heading into Love Teaching Week. Each day had a different emphasis, and we did a great campaign here through the department, sharing out teacher stories from all over the state of why they love teaching in these special moments and just changing that narrative of no negativity, you know, nothing political, just we love teaching, we love teachers and we love students, and I love that. I think changing that narrative and taking it back of why we're in this profession and why we stay in this profession is so important, and that's my friend on the right, Chris, who is one of the reasons I love teaching. Helena, West Helena, I kind of started there. The ICE Day's messed up some of this, but made sure to try to make up as much as possible, so we started that Love Teaching visits there, and I just took that sign with me all across the state as I visited teachers. Valentine's Day, my daughter there, she was actually presenting in our high school auditorium about the robotics competition. Again, this was outside of her comfort zone, and she just felt really confident learning through this experience to be able to speak to students and administrators from all over the district, so we celebrated that night. And then, these are some of our Arkansas Teacher of the Year finalists for 2023, and so was able to go to as many schools as possible, to visit some of them and just share, that's Amber Leighton, Teresa Cantrell, oh my goodness, and Kara McGee, I'm sorry, on the right, and so Bryant Nguyen and Little Rock, so just all over the state, seeing these teachers, being in their classrooms and talking to their students and just celebrating them, celebrating their excellence and their expertise. Was able to go down to Pine Bluff again to see Ms. Shorter, and then go across the street to Moorhead and see the principal there, and I asked Ms. Smith, I said, "I have an extra hour in Pine Bluff, tell me someone that I should go see to celebrate," and so she did not know I was coming, and just to be able to go in and say, "I've heard great things about what you're doing, and I just wanted to come and tell you thank you," it just changes, it changes their day, and that impact that's going to carry through the building and positively impact the students as well as the other educators, it's just powerful to see. Some more visits, this was in Jacksonville by Amida Elementary School. The principal on the left is who was the first person to hire me here in Arkansas when I taught pre-K, and so I went to the school that she's at now, and the teacher in the middle had been a paraprofessional that went back and finished her degree and is now teaching in a special education setting. So, I love celebrating that. I think there's so much opportunity for our paraprofessionals to help fill some of those gaps in our teacher pipeline. And then, of course, we got to go see John Hattie and hear him speak, which is really incredible, at UCA. In the middle picture there, you have the 2002, '09, '10, '11, '21, and '22 Arkansas Teacher of the Year, and I went home and I showed my husband, I said, "Look at this, look at all these Teachers of the Year, is that not incredible?" And he said, "All I see is this will never end for you, will it?" And I was like, "Probably not." You know? He's had to pick up a lot of extra work this year. And I said, "That's incredible." He said, "It is incredible," but, and to have all those people together, and John Hattie was so nice, he looked at the sign, he said, "I would love to just change this to Love Teachers," and that was really cool. Susanna, my predecessor, was there and she recorded it, so it was a really great day. Some of our student teachers were able to come and listen to him speak at the lunch afterwards. There's one of them is a special education major, and the other two are entering elementary ed, I think, so just encouraging them on their journey they're about to step into. I think they all graduate in December, and so we'll begin teaching in our local schools. And then, I was able to go to West Memphis, and this was wonderful, just I had time with the students as well as the teachers. I was able to speak to the teachers after school, a little bit about inclusive practices and presuming confidence in all of our students, but before that, I just got to spend time with the students there. They were blown away by how gray my hair was. It was great. They were all, "Your hair is so gray." I'm like, "It really, really is," but the kindergartners, you know, you just, everything they say, they're very honest, and I enjoy that a lot. That was a great visit. More professional development, we did after school there in West Memphis, and Asta gave a grant for their program that they used to support some of the young men after school, helping develop them and just giving them some good guidance in the after-school time. I was able to go to Nguyen, again, Teresa Cantrell's from there, but also Brysha Williams on the left, he was a Teacher of the Year finalist a few years ago and someone that I've just kept in contact with, and we just encourage each other throughout the year. So, it was great to catch up with him and spend time in his classroom with his students. It was wonderful. Kindergartners as well, and I love when we have male influences in the elementary schools because we don't always see a lot of men go into teaching that level. And then, just different visits throughout my own district. I chose to spend Valentine, actual Valentine's Day for Love Teaching in my district so I could attend my children's Valentine's Day parties as well, so celebrating one of my son's teachers as well as a teacher at the high school, different elementary schools, just getting in as many schools as I could that day and throughout that time to show my appreciation to them, not only as coworkers, but as the teachers that impact my own children's lives. And then, different administrators, that was that night, the daughter, the night I talked about my daughter presenting to all these different administrators from all over the district, because we do, we do need our administrators as well. We celebrate teachers, but it's really all educators that are making a difference in our students' lives. And then, Mr. Sutton's not here, and he made, he made my presentation, but I was able to spend some time in Marion. They have a lunch and learn where they bring in new teachers, not only to the teaching And I just think it's important for us to identify what we're assessing so that we can realize what, where our gaps are and we can actually fill them in. And the teacher featured in that picture is actually Kim King. She is the Connecticut Teacher of the Year from my group and she does choice-based art in the elementary level. And so it was neat, all of our different ideas came together for this, this beautiful story of inspiring that love for learning in students. And I think, and then, oh, last, the last thing I have included in this is a Battle of the Books, which is something I had never heard of. But students were able to read different books and then it was almost like a Quiz Bowl and they had to name the author and the title of the book. And what was really great, they shared with me that this wasn't just all of their top readers, this wasn't just their top achieving students that are invited to participate in this. They had students from all different ability levels that were really committed to literacy and reading more books and getting those books in their hands. And it was, it was really neat. My, my son does Quiz Bowl tomorrow, so I know the pressure that they were feeling, but the team that qualified from this went to the state Battle of the Books Tournament this, this last week. And so that was just, was really something fun. I love reading and that emphasis on reading and the importance of literacy skills in students to see that, again, this librarian just took it upon herself that this is something we can provide for students. It wasn't something she got paid extra for, she just wanted to provide something more and something better. So that was a lot of fun. And then, again, I've shared with you guys a lot of, of my why and I think it always comes back to that. This is a former student of mine who is now full inclusion, she does not get pulled out for any services. And I was in this school the other day, in our school the other day after school for an event and I heard, behind me, and I turned and she just had this notebook and she came running to show me her progress. She's started to take ownership in her choices and in her progress and that's not me having to go to a class with her and hold her hand to get her there, that's her knowing the importance of it, being proud of her progress and her growth and she is just doing exceptional. So, again, it's all, it's that growth, the opportunities for students and our why that we are improving the outcomes for kids every single day when we show up and do what's right for them. So that's my report this month and I'll have more for you next month. If y'all have any questions about anything, I always appreciate you listening and let me share.
Yeah.
No. No, not too much. But I love it.
That's great, thank you.
Yes.
Secretary.
Well, good afternoon, thank you. I can tell in just this being my second meeting, how much I appreciate everybody's passionate commitment for being thoughtful and considerate of the items that would be asked to review and that's what a good board does. And I'm just honored to sit up here on stage with you and navigate through that process. I definitely would say my highlight of the meeting so far, the student recognitions. And then number two is the Teacher of the Year update. So if it's okay, I might outsource all the convictionary updates in the future. Just kind of give the whirlwind tour of what's going on in our lives because we do a fantastic job and so engaging, so, and exciting. I'm here to not disappoint the board with my update. But, but in all honesty, there's been a lot of wonderful things happening throughout the state of Arkansas, especially for improving learning. Not only just in K-12, but the conversations that were happening all the way from the early learning, childhood space, but quality childcare, through K-12, different pathways being talked about and leaving the stackable credentials post-secondary attainment is all been the major focus of a lot of conversations that we've been engaged in, in the, in at least the last month since the last time I gave an update. So when, when we gave the update last month, we talked a little bit about the Learns Bill and some of the priorities that were outlined in the Learns Bill and what is that going to look like moving forward. So I think we're all aware because we had a great update from, from Governor Sanders this morning to talk about where we're on that process. But the last few weeks, we've been really engaged with stakeholders, making sure we're getting feedback from, from everybody, from, from parents to classroom teachers, to school leaders, to legislators, business officials, as we've been publicly noticing the, the language that takes, that takes the Learns blueprint and actually puts it into a game plan of policy that's going to be into action. So that has occupied a lot of our time, a lot of our team's time. And it's exciting to sit here today and say, through all of that, we were able to work with our bill sponsors and get amendments throughout the entire process. And we had a bill signing yesterday where it was officially passed through legislature this week, it's signed into law. And I was able to do some of the opening remarks and I was able to say with confidence is that at no point were pencils ever down. We, we were working on this all the way to the last minute to get it across the finish line and listening to multiple points of view and perspective. So, leading up to the bill signing, I had an opportunity to do a lot of presentations across the state, which I've kind of highlighted some places we've been, but I had an opportunity to speak at the Educational Policy Conference. We met with all of the higher education deans, the deans colleges, we were able to sit down with them and talk about what does this look for teacher prep and teacher quality and how are we going to take the main initiatives and learns and put it into action. Got to spend time at the Homeschool Day in the Capitol, met with the Professional Licenseur Standards Board, which is a great group of folks that, that this, this Learns proposal's going to touch all of our way at work as it's comprehensive in its approach. Did webinars with superintendents statewide, in fact, allowed superintendents to invite whoever they want. So we, we did some, some webinars on kind of the Learns policies and proposals, kind of, and it was almost more of a state of the state of education in Arkansas. There was 350 people on some of these calls, they were very heavily and well-attended. And even earlier this week, I got to meet with all the co-op cooperative, education cooperative directors and they bring, they call them a TCC, but they're kind of content, teacher content-focused person, to talk about what are our next steps? So how are we to take this bold vision, how are we to take this idea and put it into practice to improve learning? And when, when you look at all the different sections and, and the scope of implementing the Learns Bill, there, there's a lot of work, and we heard it from the governor this morning, there's going to be a lot of work with this board and ironing out how does those details come into fruition? So we, we have the, the law that's, that's outlining the policy, but then we got to work with supporting districts and develop rules on how we're going to implement that law so that we can do it in a fair, consistent manner. So we, we've been internally with the team here at the agency, kind of identifying different themes that, that have emerged from the Learns Bill. And there's, there's six topical themes and they range everything from teaching and learning to early learning to career and technical education and all the different components that are in the bill. And we're organizing all of those themes into work groups and, or we even call them buckets, there's six different buckets that a lot of the sections would follow into. So now that we're getting, we pretty much finalized getting the, the different buckets organized and nailed down, we'll, we'll be sending out a statewide invitation for anybody that wants to work on one of the work groups with us to submit their name and their resume and we'll make sure we get a snapshot of people that represent the state that are committed to rolling up their sleeves and start drafting some rules. So as, as we go forward, moving the Learns Bill into action, we're going to do it in a clear and transparent manner. And that's what we're getting a lot of questions on now and I'm sure you see, you get questions too, of what is this really going to look like? So we're gonna, we're going to be open and transparent moving forward and soliciting stakeholders to do that. And in fact, we're, we're going to go to every single co-op, the hope was to get to every single one before spring break, but the way spring break kind of factors in, there's probably a couple we're going to hit after spring break or even as early as tonight, we're heading up to the Northwest to start meeting with superintendents, soliciting their feedback, talking about what's in the Learns Bill and what they need to prepare for. But I, but I think it's important that we don't lose sight of some of the major work that's already been ongoing and engaging in this, in the state and how the Learns Bill supplements and enhances the work that we've already been doing. The state has made a large investment in improving literacy. This bill is going to double down and give us more resources and more will be like focused to, to solidify the work that we've been engaged in. And the teaching and learning team has already been going through a review on updating our standards, our English Language Arts and Math Standards, which is the foundation of outlining what we expect every student to know and learn in those subject areas. And they've been working diligently to get these into a posture where we'll be able to bring them back to the state board for consideration of adoption because we have to have standards when we kind of, kind of call it our educational house, that's the foundation we built our walls and roof on is, is the quality standards because we're going to teach standards, we're going to set global expectations. Then we're working on a line curriculum to make sure we have high-quality instructional materials and then doing professional development teachers so that they have the strategies they need to use the materials to teach the standards with fidelity. But we're also building out a new assessment system, which is what I call a RUI, so just build by a little educational house. That work is already ongoing, it's continuing to go on. The, the standards team, it's comprised of educators all over the state, is almost in a posture where we're going to be out to, we're going to put them out for a public review for anybody to get feedback. So when they come back to this board for consideration of adoption, we'll be able to outline all the steps that we've taken and how much input and feedback we've got because we know we got to get those standards right. And then, when the folks are writing out the test items on how we're going to assess those standards, we got to get that, that blueprint right. So we're, we're working with the testing folks to make sure we're getting an assessment that's built on the standards while getting high-quality curriculum. That work has already been going on. Learns helps us connect all the dots of, of that work. And I talked to some board members earlier, even a board member with, earlier this week, about all the different rules that already may come into the state board. And, and one little update right now would not be nearly enough time to go through all the things that we're going to do and build out that timeline. So one of the questions that I wanted to ask of the board is if they would consider maybe scheduling a separate workshop outside of our standard board meetings just to go over the, the state of the state on where we are with standards, where we are with assessment, where we are with instructional materials and what is, and how does the Learns Bill impact that? And what are the types of rules that we need to consider moving forward? So I, I want to put that out there and get feedback maybe to the chair to say, is there value in doing that? And then maybe in the next couple of weeks, we can maybe piggyback off that, what month are we in, April meeting? Maybe do a day before, a day after, or maybe a week before, a week after, and we can work with everybody to nail, nail down a timeline. But I, I think it was a great suggestion and there's definite value in that because all of this is going to come back to this governing body for consideration. So we want to make sure that you're well-informed on the steps and processes we're taking.
You know, our, our board meetings are already scheduled for two days and very seldom here lightly have we needed both days. So I think we could spend that Friday day having a work session or, or information session, whatever you need for that day on standards, curriculum, assessment. And that way, we would, we would be in a good position then to make judgments on rules if they come through then. Yeah.
So we'll work on building that out and, and I like to call it a workshop where we can maybe arrange a room where we're collaborating.
Yes, we've done that before, yes.
It's, it's hard to have an engaging conversation when you're sitting in, in a guy's like this. Like I want it to be a workshop where we're doing work.
Yes.
If that's okay. And I want to share some tools that we're working on to help change the conversation and narrative about improving learning. And that's what I think is so exciting about the Learns Bill, the work that this agency has been focused on is that it, the core of every decision that's being made is about what's best for students. And we're going to make sure we maintain that integrity and keep that at the forefront.
I think we've had those before where we would meet and, and work, but I think for, Dan, you may have to help me here, I don't think we livestreamed them, but I think you recorded them, is that correct?
Yes, my favorite quote is, we did not livestream.
So.
I take it back, there was like a couple of, you know, legislators or LRS that were livestreaming, but that was because of the topic.
Okay, most of the time, we just record them and, and then, then that, that's open to the public that way.
So I, I think I get expired with Jessica's update because she's in the school halls. So I've, I've been telling the team now that the Learns Bill, everybody's like, okay, now the Learns Bills is.
Done.
What's next? I said, I said, this is my goal, is to get out of Capitol halls and into school halls. And we've been able to do that a little bit. And that's where I, I feel like, I know I come alive and add a lot of value is walk in the halls and meet with principals, meet with teachers, meet with superintendents. And I, I did get a chance to do that a little bit earlier this month. We, we were recognized in the state to have a Milken Educator Award winner, which is a big deal. I think you, you've had Milken Award winners here before in the past and not every state gets one. And so the fact that we were able to recognize somebody right here in our own state is such a privilege and honor. But we were able to recognize Emily Howard, who is a third grade teacher at Drew Century, Drew Central Elementary School in Monticello and give her award and celebrate. So we'll, we'll be inviting her to a future board meeting so that we can formally recognize and honor her as well. And as, as we, as I'm getting out of, and actually been able to meet with different chamber organizations and talk about some of the initiatives that are going on and, and even through the legislative process outside of Learns, you may find it hard to believe there's a lot of other bills that are going through the process that are going to impact education and we're monitoring that as well. And in fact, there's, there's been more executive orders signed since the last meeting, I think we're up to about eighteen executive orders, eleven of which would, would have an impact on our work in our agency as well. So we're excited, I think, when I give this update about just all the moving pieces, but all the moving pieces are moving in alignment, which is how we know we're going to see the needle move and we're going to improve our overall position and standing here in the state. But then, kind of internally, within the agency, we're doing some pretty neat things too. And in fact, I want to recognize Talitha and our HR department to, to start some initiatives that we're doing a little bit different as well. So yesterday we had a leadership, like a little mini leadership conference luncheon for, for women leaders on the rise to celebrate International Women's Day. And we had a guest speaker and had some fun. And that's the first time we've ever done that. So we're, we're looking to try to capitalize on some of the things that are, that are happening in the nation and make sure that it's special here. And another initiative that we're getting ready to roll out and hopefully the board would be in support is, is, it kind of, the vision may have come from the great license plate that you have here. So as I'm driving around the state of Arkansas and I see this shiny diamond in the middle of everybody's license plate, I'm like, I can't wait to get an address here and get one of those on my truck. I think, I think it's like the greatest emblem. We, we are rolling out this month, we're calling it the Hidden Gem Award, where we're going to recognize, people are going to be nominated to recognize an individual for going the extra mile, which is the Gem Award. So we're going to have a little picture of them in the lobby and do some things to spotlight some of the different folks here. So we're, we're excited about the Hidden Gem Award. And then also, as, as we grow and reorganize, I think most of us, or at least the board, worked a lot with our former Chief of Staff, Gina Mundel, who most of you knew, had an opportunity to join a local university and had moved on to other great opportunities for her. But we stay in touch, she's still a friend and still cares about the work we're doing. So, but that left a big hole in the administrative team and even Talitha's on with the board. So since, since she's been gone, Courtney Salas-Fore has been kind of pinch hitting in dual roles as, as the head of legal and kind of the highly honorary Chief of Staff, voluntarily told Chief of Staff opportunities. So we've, we've had conversations and I've formally asked her if she wanted to move in the Chief of Staff role full-time and she has graciously accepted. So I'm here excited to. That we're working on a little bit of a transition that, that we go through. So we'll, we'll have some big shoes to fill in the legal world, but somebody that I think almost fifteen years in this agency and in that capacity is going to add a lot of value. So you're, you're allowed to, to call her and harass her as much as you want, you have full.
We need your text number. All right.
But all in all, I just, just want to take a minute to thank everybody in the agency as I've been getting to know the different people here and learn about their roles and what they do and the passionate commitment towards doing what's right for doing what's, what's right for students is, is such a big deal. And everybody takes great pride and ownership in the product they produce. This is a real, real top-notch team and it's a world-class group. And I'm just really truly honored to serve alongside with them. And I know as we move these initiatives forward, we're going to continue to do great things.
All right, thank you. We will, I know, I see a lot of changes in the future, but I think that we are willing as a board to work alongside and do whatever you need us to do. All right. Are there any public comments? No public comment? Okay, and Mr. Sutton is not here, so I'll look to someone else. Okay, and Mr. Sutton is not here, so I'll look to someone else. Ms. Henderson?
Vice Chair of adjournments.
All right, have a motion of Mr. Henderson to adjourn. The second of my Mr. Wood, all in favor. We are adjourned. Thank y'all for being here, y'all did great work today and we appreciate all the hard work that you do before you ever get here, so thank you.
See you guys next month.